On Tuesday, January 5th. We are from Odessa City Council in the Odessa area. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we will be standing since I'm going to give my first in vocation. And if you bear with me. Delogations 51618, rejoice always. Pray continually, give thanks to all circumstances. For this is God's will for you, Jesus Christ. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this beautiful morning. We want to thank you for blessing us with this new year. And in some ways, this past year feels like it has flown by. But on the other hand, when I consider some of the painful events of this year, it seems like it was a year that just never would end. A year that would never go away. Joy and grief are both are in our heart at the end of this calendar year. But we are grateful that you have brought us all through. We look forward to such a much better year in 2021. Because we will come closer to you. We pray more to you and we trust in you. And we love you, Father God, and all in the name of Jesus. And all of God's children responded by saying?
Amen.
So this meeting is called to order. And we'll start with item one. You're welcome to take your seat. And bear with me, this is going to be my first meeting. And I have not sat in the council seat in over 25 years, so you bear with me a little bit. Item one is ECISD Delegation for the City Carers Fund Remarked by Dr. Scott Marie. Can everybody hear you just fine? Also, if anybody wants to, excuse me, Scott Marie. We have comment cards. If you want to make comments on discussions of some of the items, they're up here on, yes, Ms. Swiner's table. And there's an agenda there, there's an item that you want to touch. I apologize, sir. You can go ahead and proceed.
Thank you. So good morning. Thank you for giving me just a few minutes this morning. It was the second week in March of 2020, and ECISD was on spring break. Kids, some of them were here in the community, others were in various places around the country with their families, but all of us enjoying a little reprieve from the school year. And I'm actually standing in the middle of the street in Marfa, Texas. I'd never been there before, but lots of folks said, hey, you've moved to Odessa, you need to go to Marfa and check it out and see what's going on. So I drove down and my phone rang while I was down there, and it was the Commissioner of Education for the State of Texas. He said, Scott, we have a concern, a problem, and let me talk to you about it. And so we started discussing the pandemic and the implications that it was going to have on learning in our state. And I quickly realized that it was going to have a dire impact upon the students in ECISD. So I drove back to the city of Odessa and called members of my leadership team. And we started talking about what this pandemic may mean for the students and for education in our community. And we knew that we were going to have to make some changes. So that March 5th was the last day of school in ECISD to what we would call kind of a normal environment. And here it is, January of 2021, and we have yet to return all of our students to campus. So in the months of March and April, as we started looking at our challenges, we recognized that none of our kids were going to return to campus that school year. And we were going to rely heavily on the tools of technology. But we realized that not all of our students have the tools of technology. Not every child in ECISD had a device in their home. And not every family in ECISD had broadband access, internet access in their home. And so some of our children were attempting to learn through paper pencil packets that they were picking up from their school on a weekly basis. And we realized this just isn't good enough for our children. And one day, my phone rang, and it was Michael Marrero and Peggy Dean on the other line. And they said, hey, Scott, we have an opportunity we'd like to discuss with you using some of the city's CARES Act money. And so we got together and engaged in a conversation that led to a contribution by the city council of almost $900,000, which the state of Texas matched with another $900,000. And so approximately $1.8 million was invested into the children of ECISD that provided a device for every single student in ECISD. So today, every child, all 34,000 children in our system have a brand new computing device in their hands. Today, many of the families that in March and April did not have internet access have internet access in their homes today. And so learning for many of our children is different in January of 2021 because of the partnership, the collaboration between the city of Odessa and between the school district, Ector County Independent School District. And so today, we don't often do this. We don't often show gratitude for the work that we do. We don't often show gratitude to our elected officials. But today, I wanted to stop and bring you a deep sense of gratitude on behalf of the 34,000 children that we serve, and on behalf of the 4,200 employees of our system, on behalf of the seven members of our elected Board of Trustees. Just those two simple words, thank you. That your investment in our system, in our children, made a dramatic difference in the type of academic experience that those kids are able to have today versus what life was like for many of those families in March and April. And so on behalf of all of us, I thank you for the opportunity to collaborate with you, to collaborate with your team on this adventure. And thank you, Michael Marrero, for kind of spearheading much of this and doing a lot of the legwork to make this happen. And I hope it's not the last time that the city of Odessa and Ector County ISD collaborate and doing really good work for our families. There are many things, many opportunities that await us as we continue to address the challenges that exist. And I'm here to say today as superintendent that I look forward to opportunities to continue the work that together we can do to benefit the people of this community. So again, thank you.
Dr. Marie, I would just like to take this time as a retired school teacher, knowing the challenges that you guys face, having faced with myself for over 17 years. I just want to thank you guys for sticking with it for educating our children, for the fight for the science that we're in. I know a lot of people still, I'm in communication with a lot of students at all levels. And although there have been many, many, many changes and many, many, many challenges, you as a leader have stepped up and now graduated from those challenges. And the city has seen that, not just city councils, the city of Odessa. And I just want you to know that we appreciate the leadership, because the district should not go any further than its leader. And we show them a true example of leadership, Mr. and my father, who works in collaboration with ECISD and to make sure that all our kids are taken care of through lunches, over the holidays, you feed the kids. I mean, it's something that not every school district is doing. And I want to thank you for your efforts and your staff, all the stuff, all the stuff that we need, everybody at ECISD. I want to say thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Dr. Marrero, would you like to make any comments?
My question is, how the one, Nora would have said, thank you very much for your hard work and dedication toward our students and the families of our students. It's a great, very grateful, and Ms. Talk Knox, thank you.
Knox, appreciate that. Thank you. Has someone talked to you, would you like to make any comments? Has one featured? Is anybody else here?
I just want to say I have three grandchildren that are in ECISD. And that would have been an incredible difficulty for my daughter and her family if the school district had not made the revisions that they have for those children. And so I personally thank you so much for the commitment.
Thank you. Dr. Marie, thank you very much for everything you do. Thank you. Appreciate your all. We're going to move on to item two, discussion on ordinance outlawing abortion in the city and declaring as sanctuary cities for unborn. This is something, an item that I put on the agenda for discussion. Ordinances and other items that are supported and have already been distributed to the council prior to Sway and Enter, Sway and End. And so today, I want to be able to enforce the power of the ordinance. It's not a resolution, it is an ordinance. And so in order to clarify the specifics and ordinance that's heard it through the 17 cities in the state of Texas, today we have Mark Dixon, who's with Sanctuary Cities for the Unborn, and if you can make your way up to the podium, sir. Mark Dixon's from, a pastor from Longview. And if you can just state your name and your Longview address for the record.
My name is Markley Dixon, Director of the Right to Life East Texas and founder of the Sanctuary Cities for the Unborn Initiative. And so from Longview, Texas, and the mailing address there is 108 West Pirate, Longview, Texas, 75604. Well, in June of 2019, the city of Wascal became the first city in the nation to pass an ordinance outlawing abortion within their city limits. City of Wascal is a very small city, it's 2,189 people. But there was a situation 18 miles across the border in Louisiana at a place called Hope Medical Group for Women. That's abortion facility right there in Shreveport that pulls from a 200-mile radius. They do about 20 abortions every Tuesday, 30 abortions every Thursday, and 50 abortions every Saturday. That's a lot of innocent lives that are lost there. That abortion facility over in Louisiana, Louisiana's laws are pretty tight when it comes to abortion issues. And abortion legislation was more and more getting tighter and tighter. And the abortion facility, at one time, said it would make sense if abortion was ever shut down in Louisiana to cross the border to Wascal, Texas. Someone down in the Houston area had said that there was land in a building that may or may not have been suitable for an abortion facility there that they had in Wascal. And the director said it would make sense for them to cross that border. Well, when we realized this, reached out to the mayor of Wascal, Texas, Jesse Moore, and he asked, well, what can we do? And so I encouraged him to pass an ordinance outlawing abortion within city limits. He said to expedite that ordinance. And we ended up coming up with an ordinance, and they passed it there in Wascal. And the ACLU said that that ordinance made it impossible for abortion clinic to set up shop in Wascal, Texas, to which I said, praise God. Following Wascal, the cities of Omaha, Naples, Waukegan, Tenahaw, Gilmer, Westbrook. After Westbrook came Rusk, Texas, population 5,618. Then after Rusk, Texas, came Colorado City. Then after Colorado City, came Gary City. And after Gary City, came the city of Big Spring, y'all's neighbor a few cities over, about 30,000 people in Big Spring. After Big Spring outlawed abortion, came the city of Wells. And then after Wells outlawed abortion, the ACLU sued seven cities in East Texas. Seven of the 12 cities that had passed the ordinance. Now, when they sued the seven cities, they were not suing over the actual abortion ban, but issues in the ordinance kind of on the outer rim. Well, we looked at their arguments and we said, you know, what they're complaining about is not something that, I mean, we believe a wholeheartedly what's in there. But we can make some minor amendments. Abortion's still outlawed, and most likely what they'll do is they'll amend the ordinance to go after the actual abortion ban. Well, we made those slight amendments that really didn't take anything away from the actual ordinance, and the ACLU decided to withdraw their lawsuit. But before the ACLU withdrew their lawsuit, and of course, this was at no cost to cities and taxpayers, Jonathan F. Mitchell, an attorney that has been for Supreme Court numerous times, he was a former Solicitor General for the state of Texas, been on President Trump's legal team, great guy, he ended up representing all the cities at no cost to cities and taxpayers. And before the ACLU withdrew their lawsuit, the city of Whiteface outlawed abortion. And then after Whiteface came East Mountain. And then after East Mountain came New Home, Morton, and most recently, Accurly, Texas. So we're at 17 cities now. Seven cities happened to sue, but the ACLU withdrew that lawsuit. And so abortion remains banned in the cities. Before y'all is an ordinance that is specifically drafted for the city of Odessa. Now, people say, well, why do we need to have this ordinance in Odessa? Because abortion's not happening right now. Exactly. At one time, abortions were happening here, though. And what this ordinance does is it's a preventative measure. It says that we don't want to see abortions happen in Odessa, Texas. And so if this ordinance is passed right now, it preserves that culture of babies not being murdered here in Odessa, Texas. Some may say, well, can we really do this, Roe v. Wade and Planned Parenthood v. Casey and the other abortion cases? The answer is yes. A lot of people don't understand the reality that we pass ordinances all the time. The city of Wells has an ordinance that says the use of engine brakes within the city limits are prohibited. It's a common ordinance. Y'all have an ordinance on y'all's books here in Odessa that says you can't throw candy in a parade. So passing ordinances, of course, to prohibit certain things is reasonable. Well, today, I'm saying the most reasonable thing that you guys can do ordinance-wise on this subject is say that babies cannot be murdered in Odessa, Texas, ever. If this ordinance is passed here in Odessa, it is not taking away abortion access. The standard for abortion restrictions, according to our Supreme Court, is Planned Parenthood v. Casey's undue burden standard, which says that you can't take away abortion access. Well, we're not taking away abortion access. That's creating an undue burden for the women, because no abortions are currently taking place in Odessa. Now, Planned Parenthood has said that they want to expand in West Texas. They've name dropped Odessa, Texas, as one of the places that they wish to expand and resource services in. What I'm saying to you today is that if you pass this ordinance at an upcoming meeting before they open up shop here, then they cannot win an argument that y'all are taking away abortion access, because there's currently no abortion access to begin with. Y'all have been given a fact sheet that tells all the details about this ordinance in a nutshell. Y'all also received a letter from senators and representatives across the state of Texas encouraging the passing of this ordinance. And there are many other documents I have which I could share, but just ultimately in a nutshell, and I kind of close this, and I am a minister of the gospel of Jesus Christ. I go wherever I feel like the Lord is leading me to go. And I just have to share what the passage that really drove me all across Texas is Amos 5:15, which says, "To hate evil, to love good, and to establish justice within our city gates. And perhaps the Lord, the God of hosts, be gracious on the remnant of Joseph." We've seen throughout history, cities make horrible decisions. I'm reminded of Sodom and Gomorrah. We all know that story throughout Scripture. A city that chose to not listen to the word of the Lord. We see cities in our day and time that are embracing lawlessness. We see cities that are burning, cities that are not doing anything about the riots in their cities, cities like Seattle, Washington, and Portland, Oregon, Minneapolis, Minnesota. We see cities like Austin, Texas. This past year in Austin, Texas, the city council of Austin actually decided that they were going to defund the police and take that money, part of that money, and use it to support babysitting for women who are getting abortions. Horrible idea. You had a council member down in Austin, Texas, bring up the idea that it was somehow a wise idea to him to recommend demolishing the police department as a tribute to a particular group. Guys, there's council members across the United States are making horrible decisions for their citizens, and I am encouraging you to consider this, which would be a righteous decision, not just for the citizens of Odessa, but for the future generations. I encourage you to stand with the cities that are outlawing abortion and become one of the next cities to outlaw abortion. Thank you so much, and God bless.
Is this a briefing? If anybody on the council would like to ask any questions of Mr. Markley Dixon, anything on the ordinance, on the firm for Jonathan Mitchell, anything on the support that we aid, and the support letter with the countless of state representatives, senators, and municipalities in throughout the state? Does anybody have any questions from the panel? Mark, I appreciate you coming here and briefing the council on this. You have also given the council a letter from the Mitchell law.
Yes, sir.
And this is the letter that basically says, understand that the city in the future will consider whether to enact an ordinance declaring Odessa Sanctuary City for the Unborn, an ordinance similar to those passed in other local jurisdictions throughout Texas. I commit to you that the Mitchell law will represent the single deaths at no cost to the city or to its taxpayers in any litigation that results from the decision to enact this ordinance. This is something that's on file, and this has been a commitment, and this is something that has, I have spoken to, Mr. Mitchell, I've spoken to others throughout the state, and we have broad support throughout the state on this initiative if the council in the future chooses to do so. Mr. Dixon, I appreciate your time. Thank you for spending your time and giving counsel to the city council.
Thank you. And on that note, you know, it's one thing for me to say that there's an attorney that's willing to defend cities at no cost to cities and taxpayers, but there's actually a city council member from another city, one of those seven cities that was sued. He's here today, and he can share all about the reality that, yes, their city was sued, and he can talk about that experience and how Mitchell is true to his word and represented their city at no cost.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Mayor, the only comment I have on that is, if everybody can hear me, the only comment I have on that is it's nice to have an attorney representing you at no cost, but doesn't mean it won't cost. It costs time, money, and energy from staff. And if you happen to, if you're unlucky and happen to lose, that's going to cost a taxpayer his money. And so that's the part that you're missing on that part of the deal, is there's no free lunch. So it doesn't guarantee that you're going to win. It just guarantees your council's not going to cost you money. So just want to make that clear.
Thank you, Congressman Thompson. Is there any discussion? I'm going to open up the portion for public comment. And if you would sign that one of the cards in order to comment on this item, on the ordinance in item two, would you please come forward as I call your name, state your name and address for the record. First is Hannah Horick.
Good morning. My name is Hannah Horick, and my address is 408 West 17th Street, Odessa, Texas, 79761. I live in Council District 3. My name is Hannah, and when I was 23 years old, I, like one in four Texans, became a survivor of domestic violence. In 2019, I learned that not only was my partner abusive, but he was lying about his sexual history, his contraceptive use, and he had even been previously charged with a sexual I thank God that I, like so many survivors do, was not pregnant as a result of a sexually coercive partner. As a survivor in Odessa, I would have had no protections under this ordinance. There were so many reasons that I struggled to leave him, even as an advocate myself. He was six foot four and more than 100 pounds on me. But had I become pregnant and forced to choose between an abortion and carrying an abuser's baby to term, I would have had yet another problem, and that would be that this abortion, this ordinance would make an abortion illegal. This ordinance fails pregnant survivors of rape, childhood sexual assault, incest, domestic violence, and coercion, leaving them with no options in Odessa and no hope for future options, as Mr. Dixon mentioned. This means that they will have to seek those services elsewhere. Our city may not have any abortion clinics, but this ordinance will deter pregnant Odessans from seeking care here or in any other city. It will instill fear and confusion in those who are most vulnerable. Pregnant teenagers and pregnant survivors have demonstrably higher mortality rates and infant mortality rates. The ordinance will bully more women into staying in dangerous homes and give abusers yet another tool to threaten them via reproductive coercion. Additionally, this ordinance deters talented, qualified healthcare providers from moving and practicing medicine into our city, even if they will never practice abortion care, reproductive healthcare, or even consider providing an abortion, pro-choice providers, or providers who are simply afraid of a city that, in which at any moment, their workplace could be subject to tortious liability for a procedure that remains legal in this country. They will find other cities in which to work. The ordinance will, perhaps worst of all, scare survivors away from reporting assaults, seeking medical care, and taking safe, legal precautions after an assault, like Plan B. It won't matter that contraception and birth control are legal. People will be afraid. As an advocate, I have watched more survivors than I can count cry and plead and pray that they are not pregnant as a result of an assault. Can I finish my sentence?
Go ahead.
Thank you. As a result of an assault, I have watched survivors turn down Plan B at the hospital because they didn't understand the difference between the morning-after pill and a medication abortion, and this ordinance will only add to confusion. The worst, though, are the expressions of grief when someone learns that the person who hurt them, stranger or otherwise, got them pregnant. And I have more, but I will, since I'm at my three minutes, I'm just in closing, please consider the harm that this ordinance does to so many in our community, and I encourage you to oppose it as it moves forward.
Thank you, Tori. I will remind you, those making comments, we do have a three-minute limit, but I will allow you to finish your thoughts, so just keep that in mind. Next person wishing to speak on item two is Judy Parish.
Okay, after hearing-
Ms. Parish, if we can state your name and address for the record.
Okay, Judy Parish, 619 West 19th, Odessa, 79761. After listening to the two people- After listening to the two people before me, I actually don't believe the city of Odessa needs this ordinance. No abortions have ever been done in the city, and when Planned Parenthood was here, they were helped to help individuals with birth control, in helping getting pregnant, all that other stuff, low cost women's healthcare. And I don't see the benefit of actually being a sanctuary city for the unborn. Like, what is the benefit the city would be getting from that? Is it a financial gain, or, I'm just curious on that note?
Are you asking that question?
Yes.
Preventative, preventative from being unprotected alive?
Okay, but if it's never happened before, what are the odds that it's going to happen going forward? Why do we actually need an ordinance on this city, through the city ordinance?
Well, abortions have been performed in the city of Odessa, and City Council, in the city of Odessa, taxpayer money did at one point in the nineties go to support those actions. There's a member here that served on a committee that I appointed that fought very hard to reverse that, and that's been a long, very time. Now, there, at this current moment, as far as we know, abortions are not being committed inside the city of Odessa, so this would be a preventive action for the future. The city has, can initiate a standard we can incorporate, the city committee would maintain that standard, and so that basically what we're hearing today. Does there any more questions?
No, just-
Does anybody have questions? Thank you, Ms. Parrish. The next person wishing to speak is, I'm not sure if I can read this, Joanne Kees.
Hi, good morning. I'm Joanne Kees, and I actually have two addresses. I have one in the city limits and one in the county, so which of you do I have?
Address for the record.
Yeah, one five one six Bertie Avenue.
Okay.
Yeah? Okay, so I can't believe that we are still forced to talk about this issue. And I know abortion gets thrown around like it's a real dirty word, but it has always existed. Regardless of your opinion on it, since Mr. Dixon brought up Supreme Court decisions, I would like to read you just a snippet of the majority opinion that was written by Justice Blackman on behalf of the six justices that determine ironically a case out of Texas. The Texas criminality against abortion violated a woman's constitutional right to privacy, which is implicit in the liberty guarantee of due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment, right to privacy without government interference. Now, I don't know how you, as a city council, can override constitutional law in this country. I don't know how you enforce it. For anybody that's not aware, abortion is an obvious procedure that any OB-GYN that is willing can do, either for cash or bill to insurance, it's called a dilation and curage. But I also want to point out to pro-life people, to me, pro-life is a comprehensive concept, not just pro-birth, which is all Mr. Blackman seems to talk about. There's prenatal care, there's OB-GYN care. I would love for an organization like this to also put their money where their mouths are, provide diaper banks, formula banks, car seat programs, daycare programs, preschool programs, who covers NICU expenses when nobody has insurance? I don't know any woman, listen, I've been in a situation where I found myself pregnant, unplanned, with no health insurance. Are any of you aware what the cost is? Not just for your OB-GYN, but for hospitalization, and God forbid you have health problems, God forbid you have a child with severe disabilities and birth defects that you are now forced to give birth to. Who covers that cost? That is a life cost. That is a life trajectory that you're forcing upon these women. He's going to go home at the end of the day, it's not going to matter to him. Where's the investment for him? I mean, unless we want to talk about a vasectomy program, and we want to keep it real, and how you actually prevent unwanted pregnancies and abortion, I don't know why we're even having this conversation. It's quite insulting, and I get very angry, and so if my voice shakes, I'm just wondering, what's the incentive for women to feel forced? Forced?
Three minutes are up.
To, into a pregnancy that, listen, my friend, I have friends that work for the Crisis Center, and we're talking about ten, eleven, twelve-year-olds, girls, they are still children. And I read, as fast as I could, because I didn't get it till last night, and I don't know if it's going to be the final language, but on page three, on page three of the ordinance, a child is defined as a natural person from the moment of conception until the age of eighteen. Ten, eleven, twelve-year-old girls are children. You're going to force them into motherhood.
Can you repeat that again?
Which one?
The last, the last thing that you read? The conception?
Yes.
At what, at what, at what point of it? You read something about ten, eleven-year-olds and something about conception?
Ten, eleven, twelve-year-olds can get pregnant, right? They're not old enough to consent to sex at all by law. Where do they go?
But you read something, you read, you read a line about conception. At what point? Am I mistaken?
Oh, I'm not sure, because I talk really fast. But I was, but looking at the ordinance that's been written for us by someone who doesn't live here, isn't invested in this community, and doesn't have a child in school, that's overcrowded, that doesn't have any ties to this community, on page three, a child is-
Ms. Parrish, you've gone over your three minutes. You go ahead.
Well, I understand, a child means a natural person from the moment of conception to eighteen, between eighteen.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Need for that, need for the council to have any questions? Thank you very much for your comment.
You're welcome.
Next person who wants to make comment on item two is Elisa Joyner.
Hello, my name is Elisa Joyner. I live on North Dixie in Odessa, Texas. I'm technically a county resident, but I do feel like this abortion ban is not something we should support as a person who has acquired an abortion herself. I was in an abusive relationship, and when I argued with my boyfriend at the time about my pregnancy, he threw me down the stairs, and he pistol-whipped me. So I knew that I couldn't carry his baby because it would be another tool he could use against me for the next eighteen-plus years of my life. And it's not something that's easy to talk about because it's a situation you never expect yourself to be in, and many women never expect themselves to be in a doctor's office making a horrible decision that's already regulated by the state with other stipulations. I don't know if y'all are aware, but even though you go to Planned Parenthood to have an abortion, there are a lot of steps they are required to take that are invasive and unkind to a woman who's already making a traumatic decision in her life. They have to give you a vaginal sonogram, not one of those rubbing your belly with the gel to see your baby. It's a wand that they stick in your vaginal area to check the growth of your baby. Also, by state regulations, they have to give you options and make you wait for a certain amount of period, a certain period of time before you can actually decide if you're going to go forward with the decision. There's other regulations that they want to enforce on the state about fetal remains and things like that that I'm not in favor of. I also don't know why the city council thinks that this is an important measure when they can't override state law. We are going through a crisis right now. We are in the middle of a pandemic. There are very many more issues that are way more important to this city, or should be, than this. And not to mention that in this moment of time, if a woman was to get pregnant, she might not even know when her next paycheck is coming, or if she's going to have a job, or a house, or a way to provide for a baby. So to say that y'all are making this law so in the future we don't get abortion providers, any OB-GYN can provide a procedure that can circumvent this law, but it's still not something they want to do. They don't want to outright lie to people. I also don't know how you're going to enforce this law. Are you going to check every patient that goes in for a routine pap smear, make sure they don't have another procedure? Also want to mention, just-
Go ahead, finish up your thought.
My final thought is that this lawyer comes in from another town, which I don't believe the city he lives in has this sort of ordinance, and I also wonder, why is he doing this? What is it for him? Because I'm pretty sure his law firm and his religious group provide all his expenses. So what other cause will he find important to enforce on other cities, not his own, if his expenses are taken care of? That's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be willing to take them.
Council, have any questions? Thank you. The next person who's willing to speak and address the council is Mike Cummings. Is Mike Cummings in the area?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank y'all for the opportunity to speak here this morning. I've been praying for y'all, I know y'all, a lot of y'all are newly elected, and I look forward to the job you're doing here in the city of Odessa. I'm Route One, Waukeem, Texas. Serve on the council of the city of Waukeem. It is, you get on I-20 and go as far east as you can before you get to Louisiana, that black hole there, is what we call Louisiana. And I'm a city number four to outlaw abortion in the nation, and it was a no-brainer for us. We're a small, conservative, Christian town. We stand on our Christian values. There's no way you can stand here today and say, I'm a Christian, but, there is no but. I mean, you're in a position today, you're on the council, you were elected to make a decision, and abortion is a hot topic. I mean, we've heard stories here this morning, you have reasons why you had abortions, and those things are between you and God. I'm not a judge here, one day we'll all stand, and I pray that when I had the decision, the choice to make a decision, I made the right choice. And it's not haphazardly that you guys are on the council. They put you here, they have faith in you. I want to touch on the council member's comment earlier about it will cost the taxpayers in the city, it will not. We were sued, Jonathan Mitchell reached out to us, he said, I'm covering all costs, it will not cost the city or the taxpayers anything, and it was true to his word. He provided you guys a letter, his contact info is there, and he called before, we talked the whole way through. And I just want to make sure, before we get too far, is the Odessa American here today? Maybe they have me recorded, because they really do enjoy taking people's words out of context, so hopefully, hopefully we're being recorded. I don't want to be misunderstood here. And so it is a hot topic, guys, but I got all my digits here, I swim with the sharks at the ACLU, they filed a lawsuit, we fought them, Jonathan Mitchell stood beside us, he was former Solicitor General of Texas. There were a lot of abortion clinics in the state of Texas, he had single-handedly shut most of them down. So he defends this ordinance that is provided for you today, and there's no, there's no cost to you, but I would like to say to you guys, as being council members, if you claim to be a Christian, or during your campaign when you was running, or you announced your candidacy, and you said, you know, after much prayer and talk with my family, I feel dead by God to run for council, well, today you got to act like it, and if not, leave God's name out of it. So your vote will tell us, it's easy to talk and say, hey, I'm against abortion, but, or I'm for it, but, but your vote's going to tell us how you feel. So I'm here to answer any questions. Like I said, I swim with the sharks, I've heard the barks from the chihuahuas at the ACLU and the Planned Parenthood. Life Center here in Odessa, Midling, Andrews, they provide all pregnancy services free of charge. There's no need for Planned Parenthood in the city of Odessa. Thank you.
Okay, I want to first of all, thank you for traveling across the state of Texas to-
Yes, ma'am.
-to address us. Do not sit there and criticize me or judge me on my Christian belief.
I'm not a judge.
I am a Christian. And I pray to my Lord Almighty that he forgives me of my sins. And don't sit there and tell me that if we don't make the decision that you want us to make, that I am not a Christian. I take offense to that, and that's really all I want to say, and I'm not just saying it to you, I'm saying it for the group. I have no, no qualms proclaiming my Christian belief, and I, I'm offended. That's someone that tells me if I don't vote the way they want me to vote from a small town in East Texas, that I'm not a Christian. I'm offended with that, but you know what? That's between me and God.
Amen. Your vote, the judge.
And I just agree with what Councilwoman Dees provides says. I think, I've been here a while, and I think there's no question about my Christianity, but I don't answer to you, I answer to God.
Amen.
You can throw Bibles, you can throw scriptures, my relationship is between me and God. My vote will be based on what the citizens of Odessa have encouraged me to do, and that is to make a sound decision, to make a sound vote, to protect public health, safety, and welfare, but in so doing, don't, don't judge me. I don't judge you guys. I know where I stand, I know who my God is, and my vote does not change my vote at all. I will be a Christian, I was a Christian when I walked in, I'll be one when I exit that door, and I'll be one till I see my Savior. So I too take offense to that.
Thank you.
I take offense to your comments. It's people that make comments like you just made, that say that our vote will determine our godliness or our Christianity, it's pretty typical of people who vote the Bible, who don't live by the Bible. So I take offense to you, sir, as well, and we do, I appreciate your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I want to thank you for coming. So when it does come for a vote, it's been no qualms that I am for the sanctuary city. I have a personal relationship, I have talked to, I have talked to many constituents, hundreds actually, that may not have come forward today, but we all do answer to God, and it is between you and our God, and the Bible is black and white, and read what the Bible says, and what the Ten Commandments say, and that's what I believe in.
Amen.
Amen. We have to follow all of them, we have to maintain the authority of our followers.
That's correct.
Is there anybody else who would like to make comments? This is my comments.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Another person wishing to make comments on this item is Ashley Jenkins. And Ms. Jenkins, if you could, name and, full name and address, please?
My name is Ashley Jenkins, and my address is seventeen thirteen North Tom Green Avenue. So my heart goes out to those who have been physically, sexually assaulted, because I was one of them, and my daughter, who did have physical disabilities that died at eleven years old, and for me that I did not have insurance. That was one of the most beautiful experiences I could have ever had in my life. For me, very personally, I do not support abortion in any way, shape, or form, and I would have never, never aborted my daughter because there was something going to be wrong with her. That girl was the biggest blessing in my entire life, and I got her for eleven years, eleven years before she passed away in my home. They didn't think she would ever make it, and that is the biggest blessing that ever happened. They didn't think she would ever make it, and that is the biggest blessing that ever happened to me. And yes, I'm covered in scars, you can see them on my face. I have been sexually assaulted and physically abused, and all of those things. But I don't have to live in that anymore, and I know that that is hard for some people. But there is something greater that came from having that baby. She changed my entire life. Now I'm pregnant with my fourth one, and I wouldn't change any of that for the world. And so I just wanna say, I really support Odessa being a sanctuary city for the unborn. And I appreciate all of you guys' time that you have taken to serve our city, no matter what everybody's individual belief is, as long as you vote for what we want as your city, that's all that matters. And so I just wanted to make my voice heard, and my heart goes out to those who have suffered as well.
The next person willing to address the council is Kathy Robinson.
I've addressed the council on a number of occasions.
Kathy, can you give us a-
I'm sorry, Kathy Rhodes, 6000 Colorado, Odessa, Texas, 79762. I'm the mother of three children. I should have been the mother of seven children due to miscarriage, due to abuse in former relationships, not in my present one of 38 years. I lost children. Children that were given to me by God. In the scripture, it says that "Children are a gift from God and should be respected." I've never come to this podium before with more emotion. My third child, as many of you know, was an Easter Seals poster child. My in-laws came to me and said, "You should abort this child because she's your third child. You have a B.C. section, you don't need any more children." I stood firm, and I said, "No, I will not." I had lost a child between my second and my third child. I knew what miscarriage was like. I knew that there were reasons that you would lose a child because of deformity, because of issues. My third child was born with a disability. She is now a doctor today. She practices prosthetics, orthotics, robotics. She was a gift of God. She was a special, special child. I don't see any reason for abuse, for rape, or for any other situation that you should abort a child. They are a precious, special gift, and I ache for those women who have gone through that choice, because I know that there is a missing part. Many of you have seen me in the community, and no man have never known these things. I don't often speak of them, because they are difficult. For a woman, a choice is very difficult. A choice to abort a baby is hard. I know, because I've counseled many that have and have not aborted those children. And I've seen the bitterness, the anger, the judgmentalness of other women who have not aborted come from those who have, and I pity that attitude. I ask for your grace on this subject, on this topic. The lives of the unborn are crying out. This is not a discussion that bitter, hardened women should come up en masse, obviously came en masse. This is something that you each need to search your heart. This is such a hard, difficult situation.
30 minutes, I'm on-
But we need to listen to those unspoken voices that are in the room. We need not, we need not to make her vast judgment because of an ill-spoken word that came from this podium today. You need to search your hearts and understand that there are doctors out there, like my daughter, that could have been aborted, but is a beneficial, wonderful citizen of this community today. I thank you. I know this is a difficult, difficult time for this group, but we must listen for the voices of the unborn also. Thank you.
Next person wishing to come up, Jamie Berryhill. Berryhill, state your name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, uh, my name is Jamie Berryhill, 3663 Brandy. Exodus 20 and 13, "You shall not kill." Our Declaration of Independence acknowledged the Lord God Almighty as the sovereign God of the universe. Our Declaration also acknowledged those wise men that understood the Word of God stated they clearly understood that the decisions that they would make would inherently ultimately be judged by that supreme God. And therefore, they made their appeal, and they relied wholly and fully, completely upon His sovereignty. For the past 24 years, I have been working with women, women with children that have found themselves in dire straits, often manifesting in drug addiction, alcohol addiction, sexual abuse, promiscuity. And one of the primary threats that is run in each one of those ladies' destructive paths was the abortion that they incurred. It at large has had a devastating impact upon their lives. And in all honesty, only upon their final coming to the realization and understanding that yes, we have a loving heavenly Father, and He made a way through Jesus Christ's precious blood for their forgiveness do they find healing and deliverance from that horrific murder that they were a part of. The Word is very clear. Some have said they don't want to hear the Word. And I'm not judging, because I don't have to judge, because the Word of God is already judged. And the Word of God tells us this, "Do not be deceived. Whatsoever a man sows, so also shall he reap. If he sows to the Spirit, he shall reap everlasting life. If he sows to the flesh, he shall reap corruption." Thank you.
Is Ann Kowder? Hope I got that right. Excuse me if I got that wrong. His state of full name and address, for the record, please.
My name is Ann Conder, and I live at 42-
Apologize.
Pardon me?
I apologize if I got that wrong.
No problem, I'm used to it. At 4201 Tombaway Trail in Midland, Texas. And I'm here today because the Lord has assigned me to Odessa. I love Odessa, I pray for Odessa every day. And I'm sorry, I didn't even intend to speak when I came. I just wanted to come and be here and pray. And so I, I'm sitting back there listening to the opposing voices here today and knowing how emotional this topic is. I, and I want you to know that I do, I have seven children, I have eight grandchildren, another one on the way. There's the one that you hear back there playing with the Duffel, that's mine, sorry, my grandchild. And I have people very dear to me, very close to me, that have gone through abortion, chosen abortion multiple times. And so I, I see both sides of this situation. And my heart today is to just say that I need to, I want to ask forgiveness for the body of Christ in the city of Odessa not being all that we're supposed to be, so that there aren't, don't seem to be answers to some questions. There don't seem to be solutions to some problems. The body of Christ is supposed to be the loving, gentle, kind arms that support those in trouble. And we haven't always been that. And so I believe that the Lord is offering us the opportunity for all of that to change. I believe the body of Christ will be able to become what we're supposed to be in this city for all those, all those desperate situations. It was never meant to be the government's job to deal with issues that the church was supposed to answer for. And so for the city of Odessa, we just, we ask as the body of Christ for your forgiveness. And we ask that, that you just know that when we are required by the Lord to speak truth, it is because it's the most loving thing that we can do. It's not love to not say what's true, because we will all be held accountable for our choices. And so, thank you, and may the Lord give you wisdom and discernment, and may we all see what's real and what's true, and what's actually at play here. Um, there is no question that there is an enemy that would like to destroy every one of us. I mean, the Lord says that. And so, so we just need to understand that I believe this is a very deeply spiritual issue. And so we need to just pray and humble ourselves and repent for not being the holy people that we're supposed to be. Thank you.
Gabriela Batasar. State your full name and address, for the record, please.
Gabriela Batasar, age 102, West Peacock. I stand here as a testimony, as an Odessa resident, because I am the target market for the abortion industry. I was pregnant at 15 years old. I actually was a part of the varsity acting actor at Junior High and at OHS. I was pregnant at 15 years old and faced with the decision of becoming a mother. I know for a fact, I have experienced the fear of seeing the positive results on the pregnancy test at such a young age. I have experienced that fear. Um, and I can tell you that overcoming that fear and choosing to become a mother has been the most rewarding decision in my entire life. I know that empowerment through community is far more beneficial than cowering to fear of what's to come. Just because we don't know what's ahead does not mean it's the wrong choice. I now have four sons and married to a wonderful man, and have my master's degree in accounting. I know for a fact that having a child does not prevent you from obtaining your goals or having a life. As a matter of fact, it was the exact opposite. I was headed down a wrong path. But now, I mean, having my child at such a young age allowed me to have the motivation to continue and press forward even harder for the fate of my son. Now I am, I am 28 years old, and I do have an 11-year-old son, and it is crazy. But I promise, it's so, there's been so much life reaping from that decision that I would never, ever think that it's, it's, um, the other choice would have been right for me. And despite my circumstances, I did not have the circumstances. I was raised in a home with a single father. My mother was an immigrant, and she left our family when I was two years old. So I was not raised in good circumstances. I was raised in, I mean, things happened to me in my youth that I just don't feel like should have happened. But at the same time, it all worked to my benefit. The father's word, when he says, "I'm working all things out for the angels that love him," is so true. We don't need to cower to fear here in Odessa. We need empowerment through community. And I've seen it. I have friends who have had abortions and made that difficult decision, but they are in section eight housing because they're still, still trying to pick up the pieces from that hurt. I have seen it. I have seen both ends. And I can see that the road that I took, the road that I was led down, was, it's been nothing reaping but life. And so I hope that Odessa makes this a decision to stand for life. And yes, there is gonna be a fight ahead. We're talking about court cases and all the other things, the unknowns. But it is a fight worth having, because the unborn, in their words, the speechless, we need to stand for them. Thank you.
The last person to speak on this item, Tara Gonzalez.
Tara Gonzalez, 913 Jeter, Odessa, Texas. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I'm a human development professor and also a psychologist, so I thought I couldn't sit back and listen to a lot of rhetoric. I have to focus on facts. So I'm going to focus on statistics rather than on religion and personal testimony, okay? So there is no statistic that supports that an abortion clinic in a city reduces domestic violence rate. Zero statistic that supports that. Um, unlike the person who spoke before me who said they don't know why we're even speaking about this, I too do not know why we are still speaking about this. Infanticide is something that animals have been doing from the beginning of the creation of animals. We as humans decided to be civilized. We decided we were not going to be animals. To allow abortion is regression, not progression. Statistically, unborn children are under attack. There is a genocide going on as we speak. Prior to me saying I wanted to speak, if you look at a worldometer of abortions, legal abortions around the world, the count from January 1st till today is up to 520,200, okay? That's just from January 1st, and I guarantee you, if you look at it right now, the number went up as I was speaking. Um, so I really hope that you guys do make it impossible to have abortions, because there are plenty of people still regressing in our society. And we don't have to be part of it.
Does anyone on the council have any comments you wanna add? Let me just close on this.
I'd like to add.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I would. I would like to, first of all, thank everyone who has taken out of their time to speak on behalf of this. Um, I will assure you that as a council person, I have, I have taken into consideration all of this. I can assure you that we as council have very, very important things that we have to do. Not negate any of this, but we do have some major issues. We have a pandemic in our city. We have infrastructure that we have to correct. We have, we have water system problems that we've gotta correct. We have a whole lot of things that we must address, and I will do that. This will also be addressed next Tuesday, and I will have more to say then. But I just want to, um, I believe Ms. Joyner and a few others, thank you for your boldness in coming forward. Thank you for coming and letting Odessa know things that Odessa may not have known about you, and that took a bold one. Um, as city council, I'm elected to represent citizens of Odessa. Not just Christian people, not just any certain colored people. I'm, I'm elected to represent the citizens of Odessa. I on this laptop have probably just in the last few days, 20 letters asking, posted. 20 letters here that I have. Um, I will tell you that I think we need to- I will tell you that I think we need to go ahead and get about the business of city council taking care of our city, coming back together. We've had, let me just say, we've had some really ugly times in city government in the last few months. And I think we're better than that. We all say that we're Christians. We want to throw, "God shall not kill." There's some more to that. "God shall not commit adultery." "God shall not bear false witness." We can go on and on. And, but I'm not here to, to do church today. Catch me later and I'm happy to. Because I love the Lord with all my heart. But I think we have to realize that it's time for our city to come together. It's time for us to appreciate one another. It's time for us to let go of the ugliness, the meanness. It's time for us to know that our citizens count on us to be the best people that we can be regardless of our color, regardless of our religion, regardless of those things. They want us, they want to believe that we are the leaders. I was reading somewhere where we're paid a lot to take this. We are not paid a lot to take this. Trust me and to whoever says that, it's just simply not true. There are some elected officials who are paid to, 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 to do their job. They're paid a good salary and we're not. We are servants to this city and I take it very seriously. I take this job as seriously as I took the job that I was paid to do when I was a teacher, when I was in a, when I worked at the hospital. And I will take this job seriously, but I would just like to say, we've got to come together. We've got to respect each other no matter what. You know, we've got to respect each other and that's just not happening. We as leaders have to set the stage for our city. I'm committed to do that. You may not agree with my vote, but you can believe that I talked to my constituents. And I didn't take this, I didn't take this position as a personal thing. I cannot push my personal agenda because that's not why I was elected. Yes, there are personal things that I would like to see happen, but the citizens of Odessa elected me. They didn't say, "We're going to elect you and then you push your personal agenda." That's not what it's about. It's about doing what's best for this city. And this city encompasses all people. People who believe like me, people who don't believe like me, people who look like me, people who don't look like me. But I have to represent to the best of my ability all people. And I have letters here and we will have more time. And then we will, I guess, open this use day or Tuesday after, whenever. I don't know. But I can assure you that it's time that we do better. We do better as a city. We do better as a council. We let the citizens of Odessa know that we want to do what's best for Odessa. And it may not look like what you think it looks like, may not look like what I think it looks like. But at the end of the day, we have to move forward. And I just again, want to thank those who came forward, those locally who have came forward and shared out of their hearts. Those who've driven over highways to come. I wish you Godspeed. I pray you have a safe return. I pray that you do well in your city. And we're going to do the best in our city. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wanting to make a comment? Let me just finish it.
Well, I would, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I thought you'd acknowledged me a minute ago. Uh, Mayor, I thank you. I think that was well said. Just so you know where I stand, I have a 14, I have a 32-year-old adopted daughter, a 14-year-old mother. So don't show me where I stand for this vote, one way or the other, up or down. It doesn't matter. I truly am pro-life. I've demonstrated it. My family's demonstrated it. This, this issue is an issue that I don't believe even should be before this council. The Supreme Court has spoken, Roe versus Wade, there's all kinds of litigations. Been the law of the land for 48 years. Why we're wasting city staff and time and money? The mayor campaigned on money being wasted by previous council. I think this is a waste of time and money for us to even be discussing this. We need to move on as Meredith mentioned. And so, I believe the city has a lot more serious issues to worry about today. This, this, this situation has been spoken for and done. And I, I'm a little upset in the fact that I'm having to be put in this position to even make a vote on this, one way or the other. But my vote, up or down, one way or the other, will not define my belief as whether or not it's important for the city or not. And I don't believe at this time, it's, it's just real unclear. And I'm getting a lot of emails just like Mayor's against trying to take personal liberties away from people. So just with that being said, I appreciate everybody coming today to comment. Everybody needs to be heard, but be sure that this is something I just really don't think we ought to be here doing right now. Thank you.
I perceive this, I don't want to pile on, but I perceive this as an ordinance chasing after a problem. You know, nobody's come in here and said, "We're having abortions done here in Odessa." As a matter of fact, it's been years. I'm sure there are illegal, illicit abortions happening. And, and if we outlaw it in the city, it's just going to move to the county. So what, what are we really achieving by writing another ordinance, kind of like throwing candy off of parades? Again, we don't need to be doing this. I too resent someone defining my faith by my vote because until you've been there, you don't know. Until you've been there, you can't judge other people. So I too have considered this just a problem, wasting time chasing after something that, a problem we don't have.
Would anybody else like to make a comment before I go ahead and close? Let me make something real clear for the citizens of Odessa. It says right here that I put the item on the agenda. I did. It's not my personal agenda. I didn't campaign on it. I want to make that record straight. This has been the people's agenda. And the reason why it's on, I asked for it to be on is because people of City Odessa have asked me to do it. And they have been asking the previous council for years to. I said we agreed to put it on board and I know exactly how divisive it is and what was going to be thrown in. I don't regret it. I don't think it's a waste of time.
No.
We have not wasted countless of dollars on this. Staff has not counted, have wasted countless of hours. They have spent some time, but this is what we paid the staff to do. In response, I want to thank everyone for coming here. I thought that being able to put this on the agenda, this is the purpose of city government, to be able to discuss this and to walk away with some civility to respect the difference of opinion, whether we like it or not. We've been faced with this last year with many of those challenges. And it is unfortunate that today's age, we're still discussing this, but there's a need to do so. I never will ever apologize for standing up for life. That is a legitimate issue. But I believe the council is that we do have a lot of pressing issues and a lot of things that have been foregone. And in my personal opinion, this is one of them. At this point, I have not made a decision to be able to go forward with in the vote. The reason is this is a very divisive. And I think that we as community need more time to discuss it within our homes, basis of business. I think that receiving less than 100 emails isn't speaking for the entire community. I think the entire community really needs to discuss it within their churches, places of worship. And then maybe at one point in time in our future, if the community wishes, we'll address it, that this was a briefing. And there is no action to be taken today or within the next city council meeting. I wanted to put that to rest today and I apologize if that wasn't put out there. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and close this. I want to thank everyone for, for coming and speaking. I want to thank the council for coming during this. And I think that right now we need to take a quick five-minute break. We have little, little senior citizens here, so we need a break. So we'll, we'll come back in five minutes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item three is the special mask requirement.
This is a council item, so I think you can start.
Okay, so this is the council item. I'm going to refer down to the end. If anybody on the council wants to be able to speak about the status of the mask mandate, I'm sure with the direction going in. For the new members of the council, I believe you had questions on the mask mandate. So if you want to start, go ahead.
Okay, I'll, I'll yield. I'm not sure what the questions were. I might need to hear the questions first, but I would just like to say that I think we should continue the mask requirement. I believe that when we did this, we did see our numbers go down. Michael, where are we in our region? Do you know the hospitalization?
Yes, I can get to that. It's probably about 12% today.
12%?
It's at the 11s, Mr. Murrow.
And when we did this, we were in the...
So we were, locally, we were probably about 18%, but locally, we were higher than that.
Right. So I think that we have seen that masks do work. I think it's a small thing to ask. We're on the cusp of people who want vaccines. Not everybody will, but those who do want it are at the point where they're almost able to just walk up and get it at this point. And so that's another layer of protection. I just would say that I think that we should continue where we are. I don't, I don't see any reason to do anything more, but I just think that at this point we should not rescind the ordinance.
Thank you, Mark. Councilor Mala?
Yeah.
If I could just, who was the, just to get the date again of when the mask mandate was into effect in City Odessa? And how often do we, is that, how long does that last? Just, just to get back on the date.
The most recent mandate requirement was shortly before Thanksgiving, Mr. Murrow. I think it was Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
And then every time that is voted for, it's a last one? Just for two weeks' time?
So I will defer to the city attorney. I think she can talk you through the process. Initially started with a mail declaration and went on to, but all that Mr. Murrow said addressed that.
So right now, the mask mandate is in effect until council votes on it, cannot be.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's perpetual, is that what?
Yes.
Very good. Any more questions? None this time. Councilor Thompson?
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of, I believe we, we've seen that the mask mandate has improved numbers and so I've, fortunately, I've been, last five weeks since November 3rd election, I've been able to be privileged to those numbers and I've seen since we did that throughout before Thanksgiving, the numbers come down. And I think it's just, it's just, it's a courtesy. To me, it's a courtesy. I'm, I'm a believer that everybody's going to get this darn thing one way or the other, everybody gets vaccinated. It's a, it's a crazy virus. I've got my neighbor across the street who, you know, wanted to go see his mother at Christmas and he sequestered himself for a month before Christmas to go see her just to get home. His whole family got it and it's sequestered for a month. I mean, out of nowhere. So we don't know where this thing is or where it goes or how it goes. It just goes. So I just, I believe the mandate is just courtesy from one person to another until we get further down the road with the inoculations, which are happening very quickly, at least in our city, I think. And the city staff and our group of people are out there trying to get all this, this done and the first responders at both hospitals, they're doing a marvelous job and hopefully we'll get some more vaccines shortly and continue this. But at that time, we're at 75%. I had one gentleman asking me to go, "I thought we were at 75." I want to make sure that, but we aren't. So that'll, that'll help things like the rodeo and other things. Social distancing is still to, to be needed, but still with the mask, it does help, I believe so. I think we're going to keep going, Mayor. That's just my thoughts for right now.
You said 75% that occupancy rate throughout the city.
Yes, sir.
Speaker?
I just want to say that I am in favor of the mask mandate. I do think that it is beneficial and I do not believe it's going to be permanent. And, but for now, I'm in support of it.
Councilor Ross?
At some point, we have to get back to whatever normal was, is. And at that point, you know, we're probably never going to totally get through this pandemic. But at this point, I think I'm ready to relax this mandate a little bit. Now personally, I'm still going to wear the mask. I would implore all of you to, much like I said about the previous discussion, I don't think we need to be legislating people's lives with a bunch of ordinances. And at this point, I'm probably with both of our to expire.
Councilor Swimmer?
So, and some of y'all have already answered my question. So y'all said y'all had made the decision before Thanksgiving, but I believe I was reading on December 1st at one of the workshops is when y'all actually did it ordinance. Is that, is that correct?
I don't remember.
The mayor passed the mask mandate and at the workshop on December 1st, the city council voted to continue it.
Okay, is it, just since I'm new, is it, is it normal for us to vote at open sessions? Or are we going to keep that during an actual council meeting?
This is, this is a discussion item. So it will be voted on, on the 12th.
Do we need to vote on it if we're not rescinding? Or, I mean, is there...
No. You would still need to vote to see what the pleasure is of the council to see how many vote for and against it.
Okay.
On the 12th.
If it's perpetual, you say it's perpetual.
Right.
So what would be voting on to perpetualize to perpetual?
No. If you wanted to end the mask mandate.
But isn't that a different process? Isn't that a motion for rescinding? Because the, the ordinance exists today as I understand it.
Right.
But isn't it a motion to rescind the ordinance? That would be a motion in the second and then to vote to rescind the ordinance. Isn't that the proper procedure? Or am I mistaken in that?
No, you're not mistaken, but it's all regarding the mask mandate.
Yes. Okay. If you look in here, the city charter, proper, proper procedure would be rescinding. So you would have to make the motion to rescind the, the, the ordinance that had already been unanimously voted. And so, but at this time, this was a discussion. I don't think there is, I don't, as I understand, I don't think there's been anything about putting on the, the agenda for the rescinding at this time. This is a workshop for information of where we're at today. I think that, what I understood, there were questions about what's the difference between what we're seeing here locally, the mask mandate, to what we're seeing at the state level? I mean, is there a difference? What is that, why was it necessary to reemphasize what the government had already done? I guess that would be my question, if anybody could answer it.
I think it was more for enforcement, wasn't it, Natasha? Where our personnel would have an enforcement tool, where at the state level, we, we didn't have that guidance on enforcement?
Well, the first mask mandate at the state level is an individual mask mandate. The last mask mandate that was issued was for businesses.
Okay, so, and, and the businesses was, is that what we have right now, where we're at?
Yes.
Okay, so explain that real quick, if you don't mind.
Where the businesses would enforce the mask mandate when people come into their establishments that people should be wearing the mask.
So we, we put, the council put the onus on the businesses?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and I think, Mayor, that was, one of the reasons was because of our hospitalization in our region. Is that what they call it?
J. Grant.
J. Grant had escalated extremely and we had called from the medical personnel, one of the doctors, some people that we, we were not doing the best job as we could. And can you assist us and help us to maybe bring that rate down so that, you know, we have a better percentage of service who might be sick? And so that was one of the reasons to do that. And I, and I think, as I was asking, that's why I was asking for those numbers. And I, and I think, as, as I was asking, I bet, that's why I was asking for those numbers, because I think we have seen it go down.
I mean, they're, they're 11.8 right now.
But they were like, on December 1st, they're like, for, for Odessa, the city of Odessa's like 20 points, something.
Yes, for Iraq, we were in the, um, in the 18th, before the city, we were around 24, 25.
24, 25. Iraq today, we weren't, the city was 24, 25, now we're at 11. That's a big change.
Well, Iraq is at 11 right now. What's the city at right now, Mr. Morrow?
11.
I thought you just said...
The city's at...
The J-Rack is at 11.
Oh, the J-Rack.
Give me a second. Sure.
And I think also, I don't know if I'm mistaken, some of the big large stores, they're, they're wanting, you know, something that they can stand on to, to help down with enforcement. And I don't think that enforcement has been, uh, a major part. I think once that went to effect, it, it made everybody feel like, you know, this is something that we need to do. And so we, I think we're seeing...
And it also required our stores to post the mask requirement to, to enter their stores.
What, what did you vote?
19.65 currently for Hector County.
There was 24, so it's dropped five points in the most. That's pretty good, yeah.
Thanks, boys.
Any more, any more questions, any more discussion?
Hey, Mayor, that was our, that was our point on December 1st. We, we, we talked about it, if I'm memory searching correctly. We were just asking, we were asking the businesses to help us because the hospitals were asking for help. So we're just, we were saying, help, do something, please, we're getting overwhelmed. So that's the reason that we, we voted by, by memory searching correctly. And we, so we just, basically, it's an ordinance, but I, I guess I don't wanna say it's, you know, it was kinda like, please come help us, you know, we need some help. And that's what the mayor, yeah, we accept.
And so kind of to answer what you were saying, uh, or to ask, I guess, if, if someone wanted to propose rescinding, then we would vote?
Yes.
Is that what you would understand, Natasha? If someone wanted to propose rescinding the ordinance, then we would vote? But if we're not to that, I mean, like if Tom wanted to place that on the agenda...
Yes, so council members would have to place that on the agenda.
Okay. And, uh, so I don't know that we're apt to, to try to do that.
And, and I think that would be my question. At one point, when, when, when do we discuss? Or, or what, what, I guess my question here is, as a council, is what do we see? What would have to happen for us to get to that point where we start considering rescinding? Obviously the numbers, uh, but what's that magic number? And we, do we even know that? This, well, this discussion seems to be hovering around business aspect of it. But don't private businesses have the right to mandate whatever they want to? And their stores may have, if they wanna have, if they wanted to propose a mask mandate, they need to be enforced before you wanna enter it. They can do this. I mean, why, why do we have to set a mandate for them when they can, they already have the, they already have the power to do so?
I think for enforcement purposes, you know, this way if they have a customer that comes in that refuses or causes a disturbance, you know, we've encouraged them, don't, um, don't try to physically, uh, force someone into a mask, but they can call law enforcement. And we had that as an ordinance to where there is a, a legal avenue for them, you know, for law enforcement to come in. Otherwise, law enforcement wouldn't come in to, and Michael, you may need to correct me, but law enforcement wouldn't go in to enforce a house rule. You know, this is by ordinance, by public ordinance. If it was a house rule, just that the business says you have to do it, that it's not an enforceable thing. Is that right?
Have we had any, have any instances where the law enforcement hasn't been called out to any, uh, businesses because someone's, someone's lack of, uh, wanting to wear a mask?
Yes, Mark, we have a few in the city, though.
But it hasn't been many. People have been very good to, I mean, you know, you're gonna have some that are, are going to be defiled on a mask, and, and, but I think the majority of the people are, are doing it more voluntary than, than anything.
Okay.
I just want the public to know, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm excited about those numbers. I, I hadn't asked in a while, and I think the city of Odessa is to be applauded, the, the citizens to bring it down that much is the great idea.
One, one of the things about the city of Midland is that we're so close together, we're interchangeable. Uh, equal amount of people coming to Midland as is in Odessa on a daily basis. But from how we approach it is not that. So we have two hospitals here, and our numbers keep, you know, at one point soared, and we couldn't keep them under 20% with Midland having one hospital, and they were almost 10 points less than us. I, I think, you know, when we're seeing these numbers, there, there's just so much confusion in, in the community, I know I was confused, about how to be able to determine what, what, what was precipitating these numbers just to go up. We, 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 we did the mask mandate, we're doing all these things now, we're in deriva, we're seeing the numbers go down, but at one point, as a council and as a community, uh, we have to get to a point, we have to start discussing what is that magic number? What is it that, what has to take place in our community that we feel safe enough to be able to take these, uh, guidelines and these charts down? And we try to get to some semblance of normalcy, whatever that's gonna be. And, and that's why I wanted, you know, I had asked, you know, everyone to weigh in, let's talk about it. I think this will be a discussion that we will continue throughout the year, and, and people will monitorize. And, uh, so bear with us, we will get there. The community input is vital. Contact, contact, you say officials. We just, we need to work this together, and we need to normalize, you know, our community. We need to get back to business. And, uh, the thing is, we're, the, the numbers are encouraging. Uh, I know this is a very divisive, and it's a bit 50/50. And so I get criticized if I wear it, I get criticized if I don't wear it. You know, so it, 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 it's just the sign of the time. In the end, what I always ask, when I ask, respect the, the, the difference of opinion, whether someone wears it or not. Let's be sensible. Uh, we have a lot of things that we're dealing with the community, and the last thing we need to do is, you know, get to a point where it becomes volatile, because, you know, have our community choose to wear it, and the other half doesn't choose to wear it. And so, you know, this is one thing that I always aspire to. I wear it, I respect, I'm invited guest, and, you know, it's just something I choose. And so this is my personal, so. If there's any, any more questions on this?
Just say let's ride it a little while longer. You know, we are in a good place by going down. We are getting the vaccine for those who want the vaccine. We are, uh, right in the midst of January, February, for, you know, through the season, those kind of things. So let's just ride it a little bit, and then I'll, and at some point, we do have to re- review.
Okay, guys, so what we're gonna do is, back before we get to, uh, forward, it's already noon. Uh, everybody's asking for a lunch break.
We're gonna recess, Mayor, into the following room, the room next door.
Another hour or three?
Uh, I would say, say just 30 minutes.
Our last, our last, let's be fast.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna take a short recess of 30 minutes, and, uh, and then we'll be back in 30 minutes to continue with item four. Sorry for keeping you, keeping you a little bit longer. So we'll go ahead and take that recess right now. We'll reconvene here and talk there. Can I have a motion to recess for 30 minutes?
Some.
Convene into a second? Second, by, by Deidra, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it? Motion's been made. Second in all, in favor of continuing our agenda?
Aye.
Can you give aye? All opposed? Guys have it? So we are now, uh, to consider item four, consider the purchase of 35 sets of personal protective equipment. Chief Alvarez?
Mayor, Chief Ottega.
Chief Ottega, I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay, we had it on there that way. Uh, Mr. Mayor, council?
Hi.
This is, uh, to consider the purchase of 35 sets of personal protective equipment. Approval of this item will allow Dusty Fire Rescue to replace gear that is now, or will soon reach out of service status according to National Fire Protection Agency 1851 standards. Uh, our gear, uh, tends to last a little bit longer than what the standard is, which is five years, but according to standard, we have to take it out of service at five years, or if it does not pass an advanced inspection, which we do, uh, annually. The purchase includes structural coats and liners, as well as structural pants and liners. Uh, the purchase will be funded out of our Lifeline program account. Uh, that account's been in place for several years now, and it is used for purchasing, uh, bunker gear. We're currently purchasing 35 sets, which is kind of our annual purchase, um, out of that same Lifeline account, a, as needed, uh, to replace gear that is burned or damaged. Um, at incidents, we'll then just replace those as needed, or as we hire new personnel who, uh, we do not have bunkers, may fit, fit them, so. Uh, but at this time, it is, uh, 35 sets for a total of $79,893.10.
Are we taking action today?
No, no, sir, Mayor, you simply, uh, this, this will come before you next week, or actually, well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any questions from the council? Okay, we'll move forward. Item five, we're gonna consider a resolution for approving the donation of 70 radios to the volunteer firefighters in Hector County.
Deputy chief, please.
Deputy chief?
Yes.
So this agenda item is, uh, to authorize Odessa Police Department's donation of 70 Motorola XTS 2500, single band 800 megahertz radios, which would be the radio microphone and charger to the volunteer firefighters in Hector County, the West Odessa, Goldsmiths, South Hector, and Gardenville Volunteer Firefighters.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Do they, do they have equipment now? Is this replacing?
They do. These are gonna be our, uh, old radios. We've got newer ones, and these are, uh, non-reparable, non-serviceable. They're on their, it's just basically, it works with our cell phone towers, but it's nothing that we can continue to utilize.
But it'll keep their communication.
Yes, sir, it will increase their communication across the county.
Thank you, sir. Now we're on item six, consider a resolution for approving the donation of 241 jackets to the Jesus House of Odessa.
Yes, sir. Just like you said, this for the approval of donating jackets that can go to the homeless. These are gonna be our out of service jackets. Uh, we don't throw anything away at the P D. Some of these jackets are 20 years old, they've got liners, they're great for outdoor weather, they're just not good for uniform personnel anymore.
20 years?
Yes, sir.
Wow, that keeps things a lot longer than that. Uh, any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item seven, consider a warrant for side loading with refuse containers. Mr. Tom Kerr?
Mayor, I'm gonna take that from Mr. Kerr. He's, uh, not in at this moment, but, uh, council, Mr. Mayor, this agenda item is to purchase 100 three-yard refuse containers. These are the metal dumpsters that are typically found behind residents. The total bid, and these were put out for bid, 11 vendors received the bid packet. The low bid was Rolloffs USA out of Oklahoma. The total bid price was $51,500.
How many did you say?
100.
21?
100, yes, ma'am.
100.
100 containers?
100 containers, sir.
Oh, is this part of an annual replacement?
Yeah, it's an, it's an annual and budgeted replacement. Yes, sir.
Let me ask you, one of the biggest questions I always get is, what is the criteria to get their, their container replaced? And who does the community contact?
Sure, uh, so the contact, uh...
Can you all write that down? I guess, ma'am.
Uh, ma, Mayor, so the contact would be the solid waste department, and I can get that information to you. I apologize, I don't have their, their contact phone number with me. Uh, but there is an annual replacement, as Mr. Morrow said. Uh, they do have routes, and I believe there's, uh, 38 routes. I'm go, I'm going off memory, but I can get you that information, Mayor, but, uh, they do, uh, update those routes, uh, annually. And so they do pick two to three routes per year to update.
I get a lot of calls on that District 1. You too, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So we're on item eight, consider contracting Noel for the purchase of the sodium hydroxide.
Uh, council, Mr. Mayor, on, uh, January 14th of 2020, the city put out a bid for the purchase of sodium hydroxide. That, uh, contract was awarded to DPC Industries out of, uh, Sweetwater. The terms of the agreement allow for it to be renewed annually, and, uh, DPC has allowed for us to renew that under the same pricing, so there's no price increase. And the total budget for this is $205,000, and this is a chemical that's used at the, uh, water treatment plant.
Any questions on this item? Thank you, sir. We'll move on. We're on item nine, consider the approval of the city of Odessa's amendment to the 2020 action plan. You'll be Maria Sandoval?
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and council. This item is, uh, so council can, uh, look at the changes to the 2020, uh, action plan, which will include the allocation of the CWG Cares Funding Round 3 that was allocated in December. The, the amendment will also include a reduction in CWG and home funds in our 2020 allocation due to HUD refiguring allocations. We will, uh, CWG will be reduced by $133, and our home funds is reduced by $61. And this will need the council's approval, so we can submit it to HUD.
Okay. Anybody have questions? Councilwoman Marlowe? Any questions? Councilwoman Marlowe?
No, sir.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. Any doubt, Maria?
Uh, I have the demo. The next one is the demolition, uh, for unsafe structures.
Oh, the request for, uh, oh, the request for approval of bids for Vanco insulation corporate for the removal of three unsafe commercial structures?
Yes, sir.
Let's go ahead, Maria.
This will, uh, will award a contract to Vanco for the removal of three unsafe commercial buildings. The building official has determined they are in, uh, significant danger to, they are a significant danger to the community and require to be removed. The structures are located at 2565 East Second, 201 Bunch, and 612 Jefferson. We will use the balance of our 2017 supplemental demolition funds, and then we will take the, the balance of the bid from, uh, our 2019 supplemental demo funds.
Uh, any questions?
Maria, what's this, this, this?
Uh, that's an old motel, and it, it's caught fire, uh, it, I think this probably the third fire was right about Christmas time. So it, it's, it's caught fire several times.
Which one, 11th?
It's, uh, it, I think it's, I don't remember what it's called. It's, uh, no, East Second, it's right there by where the, the Greyhound bus station is. It, it's, the homeless have been using it for an encampment, basically.
You came up with a structure?
Mayor, how was the, how was the particular issue with, um, fires and things of that sort, so that they can, uh, try to see it?
Any more questions?
Is, uh, on verge in Jefferson, are those residential?
No, they are churches.
Oh.
They're, they're abandoned churches. The one on Bunch is collapsing, the, the roof is caving in.
Oh, okay.
And the one on Jefferson is not in much, much better shape.
I just could place the one on Jefferson.
Is that in city possession, or is it still private?
It's still private. We don't take possession of it.
Do we try to find, find the, uh, the owners and...
Yes.
We should start charges.
Right.
That's successful, is that?
Well, we can find, some of them we can find owners, some we don't, uh, you know.
Yeah, I understand. Just wanted to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Before we finally lean on the property, right, so they sell property.
Yes, there will be a lien on the property for the expenses, uh, that the city incurs.
Okay, any more questions?
Thank you.
So we're on to item eleven, consider a bid award to construct Mary's Sports Courts at Floyd Gwynn Park, Steve Penn.
The sports courts at Floyd Gwynn Park, this is phase one of of construction, that we will start on the rehabilitation of Floyd Gwynn Park. We broke out the sports courts, that way, single contractor would be responsible for the demolition and the start of those courts. These are post-tension slab concrete courts, which we've had really, really good luck with, the same company has built these courts at all of our parks up to this point. We have some that I know are over twenty-six years old at Optimus Park, great, great company. Onyx Contractors is ones that we will make a recommendation to make the bid award to, and that's what this particular agenda item is all about. We are within budget, this overall budget, excuse me, is eight-point-two million, a little bit over that for the entire renovation of the park. This particular line item did come lower in that line item, I think we had talked about seven-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars is what this particular line item would be, and this this particular bid is underneath that. Onyx Contractors has built about six to eight different projects for us, we've had great luck with them in the in the past, I've enjoyed working with them, very professional, always on time, no change orders, if so, it's always fair price change orders, and we will make a recommendation to pursue and the bid award with Onyx Contractors.
Steve, I have a question, what's the next step? After the previous, and what's the next?
Well, after, well, they will start mobilization immediately, and and demolition will be of the existing courts that are there now, and some of the electrical that's connected because those courts do have lights, so all that will be removed. We're lucky that everything is almost at grade, so there'll be a minimum amount of grading. They will go ahead and start and and proceed, they'll get the everything ready, Trans Tennis Court, the group that knows the concrete slabs, they will come out of Houston, they're really good, they come in, they pour, they pull that those cables, they get all that in place, while that's going on, the end of this month, we'll be actually bidding out the rest of the entire project. So we're, and we're on schedule, and on budget even. Cindy?
Any idea how long it will take them to complete these courts?
They're pretty fast, right now, I think we've got a hundred-and-twenty days, I believe is in the contract. They, after they get the form set, they move quickly on that, because time is money for them, and they travel all over the United States during these post-tension slabs.
Steve, the money's for this, is this coming from the twenty-thirteen residential obligation? Where's these money for this?
Correct.
Twenty thirteen?
Yes, sir.
Twenty nineteen, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure. Any more questions?
I have a question, but at some point, Steve, would you mind presenting that picture to the new council so they can see?
Oh, gladly.
What the parks like.
Yeah, I'd be excited to do so, yeah.
I'll act like so.
Yeah, that's it.
This is all about my, that would be a page two. Mike and Todd, I said no. Any more questions, any more questions for Steve?
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on to consider rejecting bids for Memorial Gardens parking bank stabilization projects, Steve?
Yes, the Memorial Gardens, this is the drainage ditch that comes under Forty-Second Street that goes underneath the the West Pedestrian Bridge, if y'all can imagine where that is. The East Pedestrian Bridge is where the light is at Mall Drive. The west one is the one that's at an angle just further up west from that on the walkway. Most of the drainage from the watershed all the way up from the north portion of Tanglewood comes near the mall and turns, goes down around the mall and comes in that first drainage channel. The, we did do some elevation work on there, and it will overflow down to the next culvert, which is the east channel, but with all the velocity coming through that west channel, it has eroded the footings, the all the soil away from the footings around that pedestrian bridge, that's what got my attention to this matter about a year ago when I started watching the the turmoil of the water and how that was affecting that bridge. Even though the footings are exposed, it's still no problem with it strength-wise, we just need to get some concrete around the footings and to line that ditch. So we did some takeoffs and we had L C A do the design along with Kelly Cook. The design is a little intense and we need to put it out to bid, we did talk to some contractors, we were pretty close to budget on our initial concepts and our initial conversations, and when we put it out to bid, those particular contractors didn't bid on it, we got some other bids and they're way out of line with what the funds were available, it's also, I think, a little bit overdesigned, so the engineers and Kelly Cook are going back to the drawing board, scaling the project down to get it back into budget, and we will rebid that at the first part of February. This is, funds are not available to in this amount, and I think we do need to change the design somewhat, so we're making a recommendation to reject these bids.
Any questions, Steve? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item thirteen, consider necessary signatures in connection with municipal court cash bond account fund. Mary Brock?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have before you the corrected forms because we had to correct them due to the municipal court judge retiring, so if you refer to the papers that were handed to you at the beginning of the meeting. The first item is the signatures related to the municipal court cash bond account fund. The resolution modifies the authorized signatures by removing Elizabeth Martinez and Carol Gregg and adds the name Finance Director Larry Frye and Judge Carlos Rodriguez as authorized signers for matters regarding municipal court cash bond bank account number seventy, and you can see in the in the following paragraph, those who would be authorized to sign based upon this action, and it does require two signatures to be able to execute documents on behalf of the municipal court fund. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on that particular issue.
Any questions, Mr. Brock? With the changes? Okay, we'll move on to item fourteen, consider necessary signatures connecting with the city funds, Mr. Brock?
Yes, sir, this is relating to the list of authorized signatures for all city funds. The list of authorized signatures is to be amended by adding the name Larry Frye to the list. Upon approval, Michael Marrero and Cindy Muncy, representatives from the office of the city manager, Larry Frye Finance Director, and Seth Bowles Controller, will be authorized to execute, authenticate, certify, and endorse with a facsimile signature in lieu of their manual signature issuance of public securities, instruments of payments, or certificates of assessment for all city funds. If you don't mind, I'm going to read one more paragraph, because I think it's important within the the controls that the city has. Any two of the above signatures are necessary as set forth above, provided that there is one signature from the finance department and one signature from the office of the city manager. In addition, Cindy Muncy, Assistant City Manager, and Larry Frye are being authorized to execute transactions between the city's depository bank and all authorized investment pools.
Thank you, sir, any questions, Mr. Brock? Sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to consider approval of request by Marco Davis for rezoning request. Mr. Brennan, if you have such a thing, if it was on screen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. This first request is a zone change from office to retail. This is on property that has frontage on both Fifty-Second and Wayland Drive. This property was first zoned and platted back in the early eighties and it hadn't developed in any way, and the rezoning to retail will give a lot more development options for this property so it can be utilized. However, with the retail zoning, there's a lot of uses there that will not be detrimental to any of the adjacent properties, so retail's inappropriate zoning for this property and it does give them a lot more options for development. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve the request unanimously, and be happy to answer any questions related to this request.
Catherine, have any questions?
Randy, is that over near where the?
Oh, it's right across the street from Brady Station Apartments and then the, what it, Hemingway, I believe is what's right next door, and then the post office is kind of catty-corner from it, and the credit union, there's all sorts of retail and and office development in that area.
Good.
Any questions on this item? Okay, let's move on to item sixteen. Consider approval of the original zoning request by Champ Strutty, Mr. Brennan?
Yes, sir, this property is down on South Three Eighty-Five or the Crane Highway, and the applicant is requesting a light commercial. This is an appropriate zoning for this property, it's it's a sort of a gateway into Odessa, and the light commercial zoning is appropriate, the zoning for all the property and through there is light commercial, so this will be an extension of that, and it will be an appropriate use for what's existing out there, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this request unanimously, be happy to answer any questions related to this request.
Mr. Muffin, have any questions, Mr. Brennan?
Where on South Crane Highway, where exactly is it? What's, is that, just just for landmark purposes, is that, there's that a lease apply out there, is that, is it going to be further south of that, or where is this?
It's it's south of that, yes, sir.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, item seventeen, consider approval for the request of being low homes for rezoning requests, Mr. Brennan?
Yes, sir, technically, this has to be called a rezon, but what it is, we're just adding a designation to the existing zoning out there, it's a property zoned special dwelling district, and we're adding the surface drainage designation on this because they're creating a, oh, about a two-and-a-half acre drainage basin or detention basin in this area, and this will sort of be the collecting point for this region for all the drainage coming into this area, so we're adding the surface drainage to this piece of property, it's right off of Ninety-First Street.
Okay, any questions on this item? Randy, thank you very much.
And one more, Mr. Mayor. You're going to get tired of seeing me.
Consider approval request of One Fifty-Five Southeast Loop Three Thirty-Eight for rezoning request. Thanks for your input, Mr. Brennan, go ahead.
Yes, sir, this property is on East Loop Three Thirty-Eight, it's between Business Twenty and Interstate Twenty. This property was annexed into the city about, oh, three years ago, two or three years ago, hadn't been zoned, and the new owner out there is wanting to utilize this property, so we're having to zone it, and it's going to be a light industrial request. That's an appropriate zoning for this property, there's all sorts of industrial uses out in this area. This is the old, it's a vacant eye clinic is what it is, it's out there on South or the loop out there, and what the new owner is wanting to do, and you'll have this request at one of your future council meetings for a specific use permit, they want to use it as what they call transitional housing, and it's basically what it boils down to, it'll be a halfway house, perfect location for that type of use, so Denise over here, very good location for that, so, and this is the original zoning for that request.
That's the old sheet, Frank.
Yes, sir.
Any questions on this item? There'll be future questions?
Yes, sir.
We're going to skip around a little bit, we're going to push the item nineteen down to the bottom, waiting Mr. Kerr to come back, so we're going to go to item twenty, council meeting, work session, meeting times, and dates.
Good evening, or, rather, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, this item was placed on the agenda, I've had a couple of council talk to me about our work session times as well as our city council times, and this really was meant to allow you to discuss those those particular things, I know, Mayor, for example, you've you've asked if if we could perhaps skip one of these work session in particular, but I I know in talking to some of the other council members, there's thoughts on on both sides, so again, this is really just your opportunity to talk about what you as a council would like to do and give us direction to staff so we know what to prepare for.
Okay, I had asked Michael previous on the work sessions, at ten o'clock I can do, but I haven't moved a lot of things around in order to do so, so I was hoping to be able to push it until four o'clock, so, but in the end, I wanted to discuss it with the council, and and I knew this was going to be heavy-handed, Mara had expressed that, you know, she'd be willing to do it, and this one I didn't consider future. I've talked to Councilman Thompson, and he's retired, which I aspire to be one day, and and so he was, you know, either way, but I wanted to be able to get the entire council to weigh in on this. There's a lot of dynamics I have to move, I spend most of my days in Reeves County and Loving County, particularly sometimes, you know, it it's not an issue, but it is an issue, not for myself, but for my staff, I have to move things around, so this is just one item to discuss, I know some of the other members had some some points that they wanted to make, and that's why I just wanted to discuss it as a council, to see if we can come to a consensus of where we're at with it at this point, so I invite you to the discussion and to see if we can come to a consensus, one way or another. Council, you mean, go ahead.
I think the work sessions to me are are really helpful, you know, as a new council person when I first started, having the opportunity to come to the work sessions and get the information and being able to ask the questions and everybody hearing the same answers at the same time, you know, so that it's 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 all the same to everybody, it's really important to me, and so, and that accomplishes that. It also gives if there's some questions that need to be answered, that can't be answered right there, that gives a little leeway time for staff to get the information, you know, or or have it back available for us at the next one. I do respect the fact that you guys are still working, and I know, you know, that that could be an issue, I would even like, I do like and think that they're helpful, because it helps when we get to council meeting, even when we have the five o'clock briefing, they're rushed, you know, you you gotta, because you've got to be on time at six and you've got to start at six, so I think these are real helpful. I would propose maybe the work sessions maybe be virtual, you know, where that wherever you are, you don't have to try to come in, you, you know, if it's a lunch hour you could use or something, because they're usually not this long, but.
This is the, this is one that might be session, yeah.
Yeah, I understand, I do think the work the work session in itself is very helpful and especially as a new council, you know.
For for my standpoint, wasn't the elimination just a a change of time, you know, that, you know, just accommodate, it's easier to push things to three or four and leave morning and to get certain things done, as far as for me, because I'm only speaking for myself, it just makes it a little bit easier for me, I don't have to move so many components, and, you know, emergencies arise, which is no big deal, I can handle, you know, the virtual, I think is connectivity sometimes is an issue for me, I can, depending on the my X and Y at that point, you know, so it it is an option, but basically, it was just really more, you know, just.
You want to talk this?
Yes, just a little bit further in the effort than it was possible, that's what I was really asking, you know, asking the council, you know, would everybody oppose, how married are you to the ten o'clock? That that was my question, so, that that was it, and I knew you had expressed that, you know, you had, you know, that you you wanted to do, you wanted to do this in the tent and be willing to curve it down the line, you know, you wouldn't be opposed to doing so, and so that's what I was just.
Yeah.
I guess I aspire to that one day.
Yeah.
I would rather move the work sessions to a later date also, I'm kind of the same way.
Later time, yeah.
Later time, sorry. Most of the time I spend, most days I spend my time in, out in the, out in the Boon Lock side, going virtual would be tough because there's just no connectivity out there, sometimes it it's hit or miss, there's some, there's some areas where I do have internet connection, but then most of them don't, just because they're out there off of police road and whatnot, so, you know, if we can move it to three o'clock, four o'clock, that would be, that'd be great, it'd be a lot easier. No, I think that would still give us plenty of time to to discuss and go over all these little, all these, all these issues.
And we'll really work on reducing this list, you know, so, Mr. Thompson?
I'm old, I work later, ten o'clock in the morning, five o'clock, my brain does anyway, but no, it's it's, that's fine with me, it's just, you know, I guess the main problem with the work sessions are, this is a lot of stuff, and a lot of this stuff is, you know, when we're getting stuff from P and Z and they've approved it, that's what they're there for, and we may have a question or two, but it's not going to come and cancel pretty quick and easy usually, so, I I don't mind the work sessions, but I just, like, we're getting ready to talk about water treatment plant, you know, that's a work, to me, that's a work session item, that's something that's worthy of us sitting down for a while and discussing, how, when, where, what, how to pay for it, all that kind of thing. A lot of this mundane stuff, don't get me wrong, I say mundane, I don't mean to penalize it, I'm just saying, it's really stuff that staff takes care of, and and we should allow our staff, our our committees, that we have a point, to do their job, and 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 then take their advice, or if we have a problem, they'll take their advice, whatever, but a lot of these things, as we've done just today, we just heard what they said, which we certainly will come here next week, so it kind of, it's kind of redundant. which we certainly will come here next week, so, it kinda, it's kind of redundant. So, I, I'm for them, I just would rather keep them to items that really need discussion, as far as the time of day is concerned. You know, like I said, my mind works better ten and a dozen to five, but that's okay, I'll, I'll do it, majority of the council, grab what you mentioned. You're waiting up, listen.
Mayor? Mayor, Mr. Thompson, uh, we could, uh, one thing that I would offer is that we can certainly take a much, uh, harder look at the agendas for work session, and really just present to you those items that we, um, along with your comments, of course, uh, the items that, that would be most impactful for you to hear, those that really, um, that may either, uh, be a lot of dollars associated with it, maybe some controversy associated with it, or items, as you mentioned, Mr. Thompson, uh, the water treatment plant, that really do take, you know, that, that could literally be a whole day discussion for you as a council. So, we can certainly take it from that approach, if you'd like.
That'd be, that'd be my thoughts, but I...
It'd definitely be a better use of our time, absolutely.
And I, I'd have to agree, I think that is, is that if we see, if we see an item like that, then ultimately, we'll, we'll duplicate what we're doing today, and yeah, we definitely will be able to, you know, make accommodate, do it early in, in, in the morning, you know, to accommodate, you know, a longer period of time. But, you know, if it's, if the, the items are small, and if we eliminate a lot of this redundancy, then, you know, quick something in the afternoon, we'll be able to get it out of the way. You know, but, you know, the thing is, is that, you know, we'll, we'll get there.
Okay, first of all, on some of that, getting to it, you know, many of these items will fall into the consent agenda. And, and that is voted on so quickly, that we're not really discussing that, you know, so that's where some of these things really came in handy, when we have the work sessions, like buying sodium hydroxide, and, you know, some things along that line. Um, I, I mean, I, I think the work sessions are very beneficial, and so, I'm very much in favor of that. One of the reasons that we've gone to the morning was also for our staff, you know, of course, um, you know, people like Steve Patton, you know, they make millions of dollars off the city, so, you know, being salary, it's no big deal for them to spend all that, but...
Your way, drop your phone, you'll get it.
I know, easy, easy, but, uh, you know, we, we do have other personnel that are involved, and when we have apparatus meetings, it involves an overtime for those folks, building services or whatever, when we're in City Hall, or, uh, sometimes Randy brings some of his staff, you know, depending on what the presentation is. And so, you know, I'd like to be respectful of their time, later in the afternoon, though, you know, that's, that's probably not bad, you know, what Mark had mentioned. Um, and on, on mine, on every Tuesday night, it's, it's personal, I've got grandkids that play sports, and Tuesday nights, they're always playing. And so, that's, that's why I like the ten o'clock for workshops, just for that reason, but I'm not opposed if we need to adjust that time.
Mr. Thompson?
I like it just the way it is. You know, if I could change, it's difficult for me. I like it just the way it is, I prefer, now, am I gonna dig my heels in if we don't do this, you know? I, you know, I think the one at ten o'clock is my idea of the first one. But I, I got that from Midland's council meetings, and from our, our commissioners, county commissioners, meet ten o'clock, so, that's where I got that. I like it the way it is.
Be careful now, Thompson's over here, you heard him. Mr. Mayor?
So, I, I work till every day also, so, the afternoons are attractive to me, but I can accommodate either way. If we need to meet in the morning, then I make arrangements to meet in the morning, I will have to, uh, be with the Detra if it gets really late on Tuesday evenings. I have grandkids also that are active in sports, but as far as meeting, you know, three, four, five in the afternoon, I'm not opposed to that at all. So, I'm kinda, I'm kinda open, but I do work every day, and we'll have to make arrangements with my, my job to make up the hours.
So, I, I get my proposal with me is, you know, uh, let's see how we can move it into the afternoon, uh, three, three thirty. Uh, if it poses that we need to, we have heavy agenda, things of that nature, and we move it to allow some place for, uh, look into, uh, with, um, Captain Thompson, uh, you know, there's some items, you know, P and Z, things of that nature, and, uh, just, we'll, we'll work, we'll be able, we'll work in progress. You know, keep in mind, you know, the things the Detra said, and, and Rick, that's important, you know, when you get those parts. And I'm, 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 I'm here to enjoy them, so, uh, you know, so, keep in mind, and so, it'll, it'll be working progress, I think we'll get there.
Okay, Mayor, so if I, uh, just, just to recap, uh, you guys do want to, one, make sure that we, as staff, are adjusting the items on the agenda to reflect those that are, that are most vital for you to listen to, or hear, hear about, any items that may involve some controversy, or any items that just are good, just gonna be really important for you to know. And then, secondly, y- you wanna adjust that time to sometime generally in the afternoon.
Yes.
Uh, and be cognizant of the fact that we wanna make sure staff is able to be out by five, and certainly, some of the council members have other obligations. So, yes, we can, we can work a schedule that hopefully will, uh, make the council, um, happy, if not, we, we can certainly adjust it.
Michael, give me an idea of what you mean by adjusted for those things that may be a little more mundane, is that like buying...
Sorry, did my drop sound... Yes, sir.
It didn't take long for us to hear that?
Sure.
Let's go ahead and hear it, I, I am a little apprehensive about ignoring some things that we've been addressing so far.
Okay.
You know, the, the fear as a councilman is that you're not hearing all you need to hear. So, I would say, if we are, it doesn't take long to discuss some of these.
Okay.
I, I agree, and because even though it's, you know, we're just sign of all, you know, and I, and I understand that, I also kind of like for the public to know, it costs a lot to run the city, it, it costs a lot for basic needs. And, um, and so, just providing that information to them, so that they know that it's gonna cost two hundred thousand dollars plus for your containers, your trash containers, just for that, that little replacement, I mean, that small number of replacement. And that, I think that's good to have that information on there, so, I mean, I'm with Tom on that, these things go quickly, this is just a long marathon today. And, and they're normally a lot, not anything this long.
Let me just clarify what I was trying to say a minute ago, I, Tom, agree with what you said, uh, I'm not saying the things that have dollars associated with it, like the chemicals and the trash containers, they need to, what happened here just now, needs to happen at council, we vote on it right then and there, so that your rights of the public here, their demands are, there's what it costs, and, and we know that. I wouldn't suggest that we put those things on consent, and I, I, those things need to be individually acted on, in my opinion. But planning and zoning and that kind of thing, unless there's a real issue, you know what I'm saying, the things like that that are just, that can be redundant, that don't, that aren't requiring any money, you know, or expenditures or time, that, that's all I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
P and Z, first of all.
Do we know it, we will, we will, we will move forward as such?
Just be cautious of that.
Okay, this way.
Any further discussion on this item? Michael, thank you, uh, we're gonna go ahead and...
Discuss it. Yes, he's here, Mayor, if you don't mind, uh, if you wanna announce the item, and I have a couple of comments before I bring Tom up.
We jumped over, we can go to item back, item nineteen, update on the water treatment plant, uh, Mr. Tom Kerr.
Yes, Tom is here, so, Council, before Tom gets up here, I, I, I wanted to reintroduce this, introduce and reintroduce this particular item. Um, certainly introduce it to the new members of the council, I think we have now sat down with the, with the new members individually, and talked about several public works items, this is one of those, those big items, and certainly for the council that, that has been with us prior, uh, this is just a reintroduction of what is probably one of the most significant infrastructure projects that we, as a city, need to consider. Uh, the age of the, our current water treatment plant is well over sixty years old, uh, it's got some, 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 some real issues. Um, this, I, as I mentioned, is just a, a reintroduction, because I do believe, and I would highly recommend, that we also, in the future, uh, because we've got the luxury of a little bit of time, set aside an afternoon to discuss more specifically about this project, and then probably more importantly, of what may be some of the funding mechanisms in order to get the project done. So, with that, I'll ask Mr. Kerr to come up and make his presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and, uh, sorry for being late getting back to you, I was working on some things here in, in this short presentation. Um, we have paper copies for you, apparently, I did not get the file on the, on the junk drive, so I'm not able to print it, put it up for you right now, but we can get that to you as well. So, what I wanted to do was kind of give you a, a brief update of, of the project in itself, a little background and, uh, and, and those things. So, uh, second, uh, slide that you see there, those are kind of the things that I was gonna touch on, the background of the project, uh, the identified needs that we have in the water treatment plan of the project, the status of our design, the project schedule, and open for questions and comments. So, the water treatment plant improvements background. The, um, uh, the, the plant itself has a treatment cap, capacity of fifty-five million gallons a day. Our peak in the last year was thirty-two million gallons a day, and we'll have that peak generally in the summer, the winter time will be, will be much lower in, in water flows. The average day treatment by the plant has been twenty M G D this last year. About twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, we were running about sixteen and a half million gallons a day. So, in the last few years, we've seen almost a twenty-five percent increase in overall demand of flow from the, for the water treatment plant. Uh, the initial construction of the plant was nineteen fifty-eight, that was what we called Plant One, and it treats about fifteen million gallons a day. Turn, uh, the, there was a major expansion in sixty-one, and that added Plant Two. And these are parallel run trains, uh, and Plant Two is a forty million gallon a day plant, so it has a higher capacity. So, what we do with those two sections of plant is, during the winter time, we will be running on Plant One, and we clean out Plant Two. We clean up, do maintenance work, and that type of thing. But once we start hitting spring and summer, we move from Plant One to Plant Two, and do the same on Plant One. This is the only treatment facility for the city of Odessa, uh, we don't have another option in terms of if we, if this plant was down, or, or completely out of business, we wouldn't, we don't have another place necessarily to go. Uh, there are various facility upgrade projects have happened over the years, such as we added a, a larger pump station back in the late seventies, early eighties, um, some filter rehab work at times over the years, so, you'll have some maintenance projects, but these are the major plant construction projects. So, we did a, we had a water treatment plant evaluation and assessment, uh, was conducted by Corolla Engineers, and the study conducted, was conducted to evaluate and assess the current condition and long-term viability of the plant. We reviewed all phases and portions of the plant, including for regulatory compliance, what's the capacity of the plant, what's our operational condition, and water quality performance. As can be expected with a plant this age, several deficiencies and long-term performance concerns were identified. In the next, uh, graphic, you will see a picture, an aerial picture of the water treatment plant, and you'll see numbers along there, and they're numbering the different areas of the plant that were reviewed in the analysis, the evaluation. So, you'll have, uh, the, the three large circular, uh, items are what we call clearwell storage. This is the water that's been treated, goes into these large storage vessels, we have twelve million gallons altogether, about four million per vessel. And then, the small, the building in between those is the pump station, that what we call the Goldr Pump Station. And that's the pump station that pumps all the water out to the plant, to the city. To your left, you'll see, uh, down in the bottom of that picture, a couple of, uh, lagoons or reservoirs. Those are, and I'm kind of going backwards in the treatment process, but those are what, are our backwash ponds. So, as we filter water at the plant, it, we grab a bunch of media, dirt, basically, out of the water, same thing through the clarification. And that is spilled out into those ponds, and the, the, because the ponds are not having a lot of motion or action, they really settle out the really fine silt there, we decamp that water, we pull the water off the top and re-treat it, bring it back through the plant, try and use as much water as possible. The large basin above it is Plant Two, that's got water in it, I think the number is three on that, and then there's number three above that, this looks like concrete, it's empty at the time of the picture, that's Plant One. To the right of those, in the middle of the photograph, basically, you'll see sort of smaller cells, and those have water in them. Those are the filters, and so, that's right before you disinfect the water to go out to the city. Um, those filters, the water drains through them, and they're made up of media like, uh, anthracite coal, uh, could be some gravel and things like that, depending on the filter designs, and so, that water drains through that, and that's where you're trying to pick up the really small materials out of the water. The two sections we talked about that are number three, what you do there is, prior to that, as the water's coming in the plant, we put flocculants or coagulants into that water, and it's, uh, sometimes I'll call it a snot type of thing, but if you ever see it and it gets wet, it is really slick, and, and, uh, but what it does do is it's kind of a sticky object, sticky, and it'll make those small particles stick together. And then, when you go through those large basins, the water slows to below a foot per second, and those will settle down. And the process prior to that is coming from the raw water feed, that's also, we, we inject chlorine there, we inject algae size there in the summer, to keep from growing algae in the plant, and, uh, we in- inject our coagulants and flaccles, powders. And then, when we leave the plant, and so, we'll hit again with chlorine, disinfectant, but we also hit it with the sodium hydroxide, the others talked about a minute ago, and that's caustic soda, is another term that's used for it, and basically, that's to raise our pH. The better, the higher our pH is, the better our water performs in terms of disinfection, and that's to keep the system from corroding, uh, iron and things like that in the system as much. So, that's a quick kind of run-through of what the plant does. So, in our, uh, evaluation of the plant, some of the major deficiencies or categories are kind of listed here. Under regulatory, our filters were designed and built decades ago. Current regulations have design guidelines that would require that our filter media be deeper than it is. Now, our media performs satisfactorily right now, because we have enough filters that we kind of distribute our water across it. But it does not meet state guidelines, and so, if we're doing a major work on the plant, we're going to have to deepen that media. That, that means we have to go to the bottom of the filters, and we have to wreck out the undermedia, underground, underground, under, under drains, so that we can get enough room without having to wreck out the walls and everything to try and do. Chemical storage, uh, one of the primary chemicals we have out there is, is chlorine gas. Okay, chlorine gas is the primary disinfectant used throughout the country, uh, probably the world. It's the only thing that really holds a residual when the water comes out and into your distribution system. You'll hear people talking about ultraviolet disinfection, uh, ozone, some of those other things. We can't use ozone, we have constituents in our water with ozone that will form poisonous gases, so ozone's not an option for us. Ultra, uh, ultraviolet doesn't hold residue in the system, so that, you know, it won't keep your water disinfected out of the plant. The chlorine does, and we have to use ammonia with our chlorine, because under state regulations, there's a, there's a, uh, a formation called trihalomethanes, and they're formed from constituents in our water reacting with chlorine. They're considered potential cancer-causing agents, and so, there's regulations on what levels those can be. Our water has what's called, and I'm going a little bit Michael crazy, so, 'cause I know I'm supposed to give y'all a break from the house, but our water, uh, our water has bromoforms in it that will form PHMs like that, I mean, really fast. And so, we use ammonia, like most places, many, many places throughout the country do it, Midland, San Angelo do, obviously, use same type of water, but, uh, most places in the country use... use ammonia with chlorine precipitation. So, our chemical storage for chlorine is not as large as the state regulations would require us to have. You have a certain number of days of chlorine storage that they would want you to have, and that's based on our treatment capacity of fifty-five million gallons a day. We don't normally treat that much, right? Your capacity for storage should be for that much, and so, in this project, we will be enhancing our storage for chlorine, although at this time, we don't absolutely need that much storage per se.
What are you gonna, what are you gonna be raising the capacity to? What's the proposed?
The, the capacity of the plant will stay the same.
Okay.
The, the storage that we have for chlorine, the, is not enough if we were treating fifty-five. It's enough for the thirty-two, thirty-six that we may see and things like that, but we're growing, we have been growing, and so, we, and the regulations do say that we're supposed to have that much storage. In addition, uh, uh, so, operationally, electrical systems. So, when we first did the, when we first went through the evaluation, some of the things that we identified was, of course, our electrical systems, a lot of them very antiquated, though, some of them have been in, under, have been subject to water getting on them and corroding even more so. Water and electrical don't make a good mix. But those, uh, so, the first thing that we kind of identified was that, hey, we don't have the safety placards and things that you would really need to have with electricity. And we've got stuff out there that's twenty-four hundred volt, I mean, high, big, you know, big horsepower motors, all the way down to twelve volt DC, right? But, the stuff we worry about, four eighty, two forty, and the twenty-four hundred volt. So, if you're doing maintenance around this equipment, those high voltages can reach out and grab you, right? So, under more modern standards, as you develop this equipment and put it in, you would have safety placards and things that would tell you what you need to be wearing if you're actually gonna open that cabinet up, how far away you need to be, whether you need a, an insulated stick. Uh, I'm not an electrical engineer, so, but, uh, they, they identified those concerns in the first evaluations. So, we, uh, we hired the consultant to come in and do what's called an arc flash study for us. They came in, we took down equipment, uh, so they could inspect it and do those things, and what they came back to us and told us was, "We can't do it for you. We can't tell you based on the condition of your equipment." In other words, they have certain standards that they follow, right? Engineers, we use some calculations, we do this, we do that, but a lot of that stuff is based on being able to say that equipment's in decent shape, right? Well, if that equipment's not in decent shape, you can't, that engineer sealed that document, and if somebody gets hurt, he's liable for it. The engineer said, "We can't do that arc flash for you. Your equipment's in too bad a shape. You really need to replace the equipment, uh, and there's just, can't, we can't give you a safety rating for it." So, that identified even more so that our electrical equipment needed, needed help. And, so, under operationally, we have concerns about the electrical systems and how long they'll last and being able to keep the plant running. Operationally, we have a supervisor control in that acquisition. You'll hear me call it STADA all the time. This is remote control, basically. We monitor the water that goes through the plant, we, it, it automatically tests the turbidity of our water coming off of our filters. It records that for us, because under regulatory requirements, we have to have readings every fifteen minutes on every water coming out of a filter. So, the STADA system takes all that data, puts it in a database for us. It also monitors all our tanks out of the system, it monitors the flow rates coming through the plant, it monitors whether the pumps are operating or not, because the operators can't be at all the locations at all the same time. And it records these things for us, and it records testing data, analysis data, and those types of things, and those are all things we have to report to the state. The system we have has been built over time by some pieces here, another piece over here. They're not consistent, they have become antiquated in places, uh, our communication system is not real good with it, and the system really needs to be completely revamped for it to work for us and continue to work for us. And so, that's a major component that was identified in our operations. Mechanical systems, uh, there's some pictures here that'll show you, uh, the corrosion and things that occurred around mechanical systems, as well as just the wear and et cetera. And then filtration, we have one filter that has already failed on us, uh, and so, we're very concerned about going in there and rehabbing some of these filters to make sure that they're not going to completely fail on us. And what happened, one, one had a concrete failure in the wall, all the media washed out of the filter, you can't use it anymore until you rebuild it. Structural, uh, Plant One is the earliest plant, right? Nineteen fifty-eight, and in a minute, you'll look at a wall of, a picture of the wall on that plant.
Nineteen fifty?
Sorry?
Nineteen five eight?
Yes, ma'am, nineteen fifty-eight. And that wall, uh, is demonstrating failure, uh, it's not failing per se today, but it's, you'll, you'll see cracks throughout the wall, you'll see where water seeps through it while we're using it, uh, the, the steel that reinforces those walls is subject to that water, to that pipe, to that wall stretching. We're seeing oilage when we fill the tank, you know, the walls are moving a little bit, and that's not what you want. So, this, this plant is not in good shape. So, in this project, we're going, we propose to replace this plant. The footprint on this plant, the area that this plant takes is large, we can put in a new type of plant for it that will take up less than a third of the space of what it does. It'll treat, that plant's rated for twenty, it'll be rated, or fifteen, this one will be rated for twenty. It's a more, uh, advanced technological design in what they call, uh, upload, uh, clarification or, uh, um, I don't know, I can't keep up with terms anymore, but anyway, it, it's got slanted plates, and so, the water has to flow up between slanted plates, and that causes the grabbing to have a much more significant effect on the particles from there that pulled down. It also takes up a third of the space, so, if Odessa needs to grow the plant in the future, you'll now have space to add additional pieces in there without having to try and go outside the plant for hours. From a safety perspective, uh, the electrical systems are obviously a major concern for us. The chemical storage and operation is a, is a concern for us, and, but expanding it, we're going to put in some additional things that will help us in terms of safety. Chlorine is a very poisonous gas, uh, you know, World War One, mustard gas, those type of things, chlorine, right? And, uh, so, chlorine's a very dangerous gas. We have to use it in gas form because we use so much of it. You know, you can't use it, you, sometimes you can buy chlorine for your pools or something like that, and that is diluted in water. Well, that would be not productive, very difficult for us to handle in our volumes. So, this is common for all cities. We have risk management plans in place, but, uh, uh, so, you want this gas, if you have a leak, to be contained and scrubbed. Handrails were some, uh, these are some of the light, or, when I say light, handrails are rare, you need handrails more, better handrails work. And, uh, staircases, we had some staircases that were serious. So, if you look at the next slide, that's the wall of Plant Number One. And you can see all of those white-looking, choppy-looking spots coming down that, those are the locations where the cracks are and where the water leaks through the walls and the cracks have faced it. When we first evaluated it, we were hoping that we wouldn't need to have to replace that plant, uh, but we had other construction experts come in, and they advised us that, uh, that appears that the concrete, you know, sometimes concrete, well, concrete can last, maybe longer at times, but they advised that there may have been condition, conditional problems with some of the concrete work at the time, you know, whether it was some of the material qualities or something like that. The next page will show some other cases where we have concrete corrodes. You'll see that one column that goes up, you can see at the top, you can see where the corrosion has caused the concrete to break away, and you have exposed steel, and now, the steel's subject to the corrosion, right? And you see another one's a major flume that has some etching on the edge, uh, that one staircase, the support column. And one of the contributors potentially to this is, back in the day, Lake Spence was used heavily here as a water source, and it was extremely salty water, right? It had a very high PDS, twenty-five hundred, twenty-six hundred. And that water in itself probably had a much higher corrosivity content than what you see now. And, and Spence's water, because the lake is drained and refilled, i- its quality is even better than it definitely was then, but there's some indication that that water quality created, you know, caused some of the exacerbation. The next picture is some of our electrical equipment. You can see a lot of rusting from, uh, humidity and water exposure to some of those pieces. The picture below that is, uh, STADA-type controlled cabinet with wiring and things running through it, and kind of gives you an indication of how many types of things our wiring's, we're trying to keep up with and, uh, and the difficulties in maintaining all of that. The next pa- pictures are of the flocculator, uh, mixing mechanisms, the corrosion is basically what they're, they're indicating here, uh, and with wet and dry and those types of things, and the fact that we do have salt contents in our water, that's gonna create more corrosion. And the next picture shows some pump corrosion. The one on the left is highly corroded type of pump structure on the outside. So, on to the status of the design. We're approximately sixty percent on design. They have made us sixty-five percent submiddle, but even they admitted that they felt like they were still pretty sure of that, and so, I wouldn't say that we're quite that far along in terms of completing the design. The construction sheets, there're four, there're four hundred and eighty-four documents at this time for the construction, so, I mean, one hundred and eighty-four sheets going all the way from electrical to everything else that's happening there, right? So, pretty substantial amount of work. Specification pages is almost two thousand pages of specifications. Contractors can get to say and read all that. The final design completion, we're looking at around June of this year. At that time, the TCU will review the full drawings, it can take two to three weeks.
How, you mean June of twenty-one?
Uh, twenty-one.
The slide says twenty.
Yeah, that, yeah, who is that guy? He's still in twenty. Sorry, that's twenty twenty-one. So, the construction duration is three to four years. It's a long time to do it, and the biggest problem is the fact that, say, building Plant One, we have to run on Plant Two the whole time we're building Plant One, so you gotta do that in one sequence time. Taking out of electrical equipment, I can't just shut down the Goldr Pump Station for two months, six months, I can't shut it down for more than a week, really. So, there's courses, they'll have to do this work, and then they'll get it all online, getting it running, and then they'll have to move to this, and so, it's a, it's a very sequentially, uh, complex project in that sense. So, it's three to four years to complete. The next slide is just, uh, kind of demonstrating some of the sheets and the plans and how many plant sheets there are. So, looking at the overall schedule, again, uh, looking at June of, and then, uh, the review again, two to three months, midletting hopefully by August, September, maybe sooner, we just, I just don't want to, uh, overplay my hand or something. Uh, council consideration, we'd be looking at November to December, designing, construction starting January, February of next year, and then, uh, construction completion, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. The project cost is one hundred million dollars, that includes all the construction, as well as construction management, uh, and at this time, it's not funding, so.
Hello? Any questions?
Yeah, the councilman?
I got one real basic question.
Yes, sir.
Rather than redo the plant where it is, and I know you guys are smarter to figure out, why don't you just go do a whole new plant, shut one down and operate the next one? Wouldn't that be more efficient, quicker, and?
Don't talk to Rick Haimaner, he's the plant manager, he can just jump all over it.
I don't care. Answer my question. It looks like to me you got plenty of property, you know, stick a new plant in, tied in, and, and turn one off and turn the other one on, and A, the construction will be faster, it looks like, and B, you wouldn't have to deal with the constraints you have over a piece of property on, on Forty Second, go.
The, uh, I'm not sure of where the space you're talking about specifically would be. Uh, all of your infrastructure-
Have to go outside the city limit, there's lots of land out here.
Yes, sir.
We have a lot of land around us.
So, when you build a plant, it becomes the heart, right? And when you come out of your heart, you've got a Oris, big dock, big, you're talking about the big stuff, and then, when you get out to the other stuff, it's small. You might have to redo your infrastructure quite a bit, and that can cost a lot, but a new plant would probably run you three, three hundred to three hundred and fifty million.
Well, that's, that answers the question, then, okay. Now, that's, it's a question that needs to be asked.
Oh, yes, sir, no, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Because I want to make sure that we're not going to get money after mad.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
You know, and, and, and go back into existence, that's kind of like raising a, thinking a house, an old house in downtown Odessa and trying to redo it and make it, you know, that's a nice thing to do, but sometimes you get into situations where it's just not feasible, and, and it looks like, rather than operating on, it looks like you can do a whole new plant faster than three to four years, which leads me to my next concern, which is, can you keep that thing together for three to four years? That's a long time. What happens if it fails?
Yes, sir. A new plant is going to take, uh, is gonna take close to that, because you're rebuilding everything, the whole facility. You still would have to design the whole facility, because it wouldn't be the same design. Uh, I, I'm not, I'm not trying not to get a new plant, and, and I didn't mean to act like I was taking your question lightly. Sometimes I try to, you know, lighten up the script.
That's right, I didn't think of that, sir.
But, uh, but, yes, sir, um, a, a new plant, um, would be a beautiful thing, we would love to have it. The cost of it, the, uh, but thi- this one, you, you're not gonna have it built in much less time than this one, it would be at least three years before you would have a new plant built.
The, the question of why don't we build a new plant was one of the first questions we asked, and looking at the numbers, economically, I mean, it would be twice what it would cost to rehab this one, so we answered that question early on, so, the best recommendation we have for the council is to rehab the one we have, uh, parts of it, as you saw, are in bad shape, but parts of it are in good, and I think through this entire process, we're working with, uh, highly skilled engineers and contractors, so every step that will, that will be taken in terms of construction, we'll move forward with the consideration of ensuring that we have continuity in our system and that that is not disrupted. So, that's gonna be part of this whole process, because the last thing they want to do is start something and something fails, so all of that will be taken into consideration.
And that, that's my, my remark was this, is that, you know, who knows what's gonna happen, uh, uh, Saudi Arabia gets bombed by Iran, and their oil's cut off, and our food is back on again, and we experience a growth the next five years like we do the last three, we can't handle it.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you won't be able to handle it with a basket, and we've got a real issue there, and then, even today, if it goes down, I mean, it looks like to me we're a heartbeat away from, or maybe a short electrical vault away from, you know, boiling our water, you know, so I know nobody wants to do that. So, if, if you have it, I could encourage anybody who's not walked in it, I have, I've been through it, it's like walking back in time, and I remember, I know the verse, nine, nineteen fifty-eight, or I remember when that plant went up, I was nine years old, that was the most coolest building in town, it was like, wow, look at this deal. We were all kids, and it was really cool, but, uh, that's how long it's been there.
Yes, sir.
I walked, have you ever been through it, you take the time to walk through it and just see, the mayor, I don't know if you had this type of chance lately to go through there or not, but, um-
I, I saw it all the time.
You need to use it.
I definitely want to.
It'll, it'll open your eyes, it feels like you walked back in time capsule.
Yeah, we definitely are gonna, are gonna set up times for any council member-
It's scary.
-who hasn't already seen it to see it. Uh, but, to, again, Mr. Thompson, to your point, that's just gonna be part of the, the plan moving forward, is to ensure that we have continuity of service and that that is not, that that is not disrupted as we- is to ensure that we have continuity of service and that that is not, that that is not disrupted as we move forward.
At one time, we had discussed building the new units where the, the holding ponds are. Is that still what you're talking about doing?
Uh, no, sir, that space, we are not using at this time. It is still available. We were looking at advanced water treatment facility for RO, is that what you're talking about?
Well, we did discuss RO, but when we, first time we talked about adding to this plant, or rebuilding this plant, or whatever the case may be, I, it was my memory that we were talking about taking those holding ponds and putting the new units there and, and not disrupting the existing units.
So Tom, I think what you recall was, when we were, when we had that preliminary evaluation, if you will, we were talking about the advanced water treatment or the RO. And that was going to be adjacent to those clear wells, but not replacing those clear wells, correct, Tom?
Yes, sir.
There was, if you remember from the drawing, there was a couple of buildings that were going to be new.
Right.
Right to the east of where now the chemical plant is at. But, but they were not going to replace the clear wells.
The other question I would have is, rebuilding a plant costs a hundred million dollars, and building a new plant's three hundred and fifty million dollars? I'm not getting that. You're going to have to explain it a little more detail to me.
Okay. I'm basing it on numbers that, that we would see about six dollars per million gallons is, is just a, an overall highest in the type of number that they use. But you're talking about having to go in, and you've got to build all your foundations. You've got to lay it out first, get it laid out, you've got to get all your foundations, and all your piping has to be done. All your electrical systems have to be laid out, rerouted, or routed for where they're going. It, it, it's, it's a, it's a full process. In other words, we're rehabbing something. We're actually rebuilding one section of plant, but we're not, we're not building the whole plant.
I think the, the terminology is, is what we've got to get clear, Tom. When Tom says rebuild the plant, he's talking about just the portion of plant one. That's the one that's going to be entirely rebuilt, and the rest of the plant area will be rehabbed.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if we looked at, you know, in the, in the perfect world where we could rebuild, I mean, we could build an entirely new plant, then you're having to look at the routing of the transmission lines and intake and all that, is that correct?
Yes.
And so where it sits right now, it, the lines are already in place for the reservoir, and, and all the transmission lines are set. So if you built an entirely new plant facility, you have to reroute that, is that correct?
Right. Unless we were able to put the plant there or, you know, right nearby, you have thirty-six inch water mains leaving the plant. And then, you know, eventually out in the system, we're doing twelves and eights, you know. So if you were to reroute somewhere where we don't have thirty-sixes, you're going to need to run, and, and because of friction losses and stuff, you're going to need to run probably forty-eight inch or something back to this location to tie into those. Now, does that mean you don't want to do that? Not necessarily. I mean, if it all comes out economically to be the better perspective, then, then, then you would be fine to do so. But the, the plant does not indicate that it can't survive long term. It just needs a good rehab. And those are, those are changes.
But what does concern me is, is, is your comment about the failing concrete structures? Because, you know, those are hard to redo, I would think. But, you know, you've got pictures of, you know, and I saw where the concrete's falling off the walls, and the rebar showing, and, I mean, I guess you can patch that stuff. But do you know what the real integrity is inside the walls of those plants? I don't think you really do, do you?
We've done some, what they call forensic analysis on some of the walls and things like that. Some of them have indicated to be very, in, in good shape, but some not, right? The ones we've identified are definite concerns and issues. The, so say plant one, which is that one section up in the north. It's two basins attached to each other. That one is just indicating a lot more stress and strain than we would have anticipated for a concrete structure like that. But I've, in San Angelo, I referenced it, the, the original part of the San Angelo plant was constructed in nineteen twenty-eight. Those walls are all still good. That plant is still strong, still working. But it's also much smaller. So we also have expanded, they expanded that facility, so it has a lot of others, ones that they rely on just as much so. But this plant one is demonstrating enough deflection in the walls, enough degradation, that it's concerning. We don't know that it would fail for next year, or that it would last twenty years. But we know that it doesn't look good, and it certainly could fail. And so it's a, since we're doing work there, it'll be a more opportune time. It'll also be more cost efficient. And we put in this newer technology, like I said, takes up a third of the footage of the others. And so it gives us some opportunities there.
Tom, I have a quick question. So on, on rehabbing that, what is the longevity? Does the research show, I mean, is it ten, another ten years, fifty years?
Our intention would be that it's going to, whatever we're redoing and everything else should last easily, but we would hope up to fifty years. There's, you're always going to continue to have some maintenance issues that you will have to address. The, plant two, it, it appears to be in good shape, it's, it's, appears to be doing better. Although it does show some creps as well. Our filter basin, some of those shows some cracks as well. The filter failure that we had had to do with some rework that they did on the filters back in the, I believe it was in the nineties. In which they changed out what we call the filter trough. And when they did, they penetrated the walls, and it appears that they may have created some structural problems or concrete problems when they did.
And remember, plant two's capacity is...
Forty million gallons.
Forty million, and plant one is fifteen. So we could conceivably operate and meet all our demands if plant one was not there. And that's the one again that we would recommend to be rebuilt.
The only issue that will have those operating, operating on two is the, the, the... Well, the, the, well, the cleaning.
Right.
You know, that, that's, that's something you'll have to get around, you know, with, I mean, and, and operate.
Right.
Construction, so you have three major things going on at one time, twice a year.
The, we've had to, we've had to run on one or two for a longer period of time at certain places, than even one for slightly longer period of time. We can't run on one long enough, because, but so when you put in this new facility at plant one, we've already got layout for plant, for adding to that plant. You could turn that section into a sixty million gallon day treatment section, right? So you've got a forty section over here, if you ever need to rebuild this, you can go ahead and add to this one first, and then worry about whether you need to rebuild that next.
Mayor, what I would like to propose to you and the rest of the council is, again, another very specific work session on this. We will be happy to bring in our consultants, so you can ask them those questions, you know, why, why not build a new one versus rehab this one? They'll be able to give you specific detail. Moreover, we can also bring in our financial advisors, so we can have a real discussion about what would be the most viable way to, to fund a project like this.
Correct. Okay. Any more questions?
No, I guess, I guess the only other thing I have, I'm sort of going to...
I would rather just wait for the work session and bring in the consultants in. Because, I mean, I think we have one more thing on the mission. Questions could be answered quicker, more efficiently that way. Because my big, my main concern is, you know, we alternate between plants. While we're on plant two, we're cleaning out plant one and doing maintenance on that. While we're in this construction phase for three to four years, we're not going to have that option. So, I mean, how, how efficient is that going to maintain, I mean, running just on, on one plant? Is that going to wear it down faster, or is that going to be able to provide for the whole city during that time?
And I think you're right, Mr. Michael, the consultants will be able to answer that. Their expertise is rebuilding and building plants like this. So they're going to, we're going to obviously look to them to guide us through that process. But having them here, I think they can certainly answer your questions more technically than perhaps I can and what Tom can.
This was more, just, it's touch base, get an idea. And then later on, in another session, where we'll really get into minutia and start exploring the, the costs and the, and the funding availabilities that will be afforded to us. And then how that's associated to the taxpayer. But yeah, that would definitely be one of those long days, I guess. We'll, we'll get, we'll, we'll get there, we'll, we'll get this scheduled.
I have another thing I'd like to say, Mayor, but to back to Nisa's point, and somebody else said it too. I was glad to hear what you just said about the ability to be able to expand to another forty, whatever it was, the third, a third plant. So whatever we do, I guess my point is, let's try to be forward thinking, let's just go fix the problem with a Band-Aid on it and turn our backs. Let's try to plan for future. And that's what we're here for. So while we're doing this, we're having to spend all this money, let's do, hey, we're, we do as wisely as possible, but let's be sure we build in longevity into it. So other councils down the road, we don't kick the can down the road, so to speak. That's, that's my, my thoughts.
It'll be cheaper now, and it will be better.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Kirk, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, we're going to go to item twenty-one. City of Odessa Boards and Commissions. Ms. Grimaldo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You've been provided there next to you this nice Boards and Commissions book. I just wanted to quickly review it with you to let you know what is the Boards and Commissions. This is for your review today, and it will be placed on a future council meeting for continued discussion and action. The council appoints individuals to serve on city boards and commissions. If you notice on your first tab, the council committees, this is a list of the prior council service to committees. The council will need to discuss the boards that each would like to serve. And behind that list, it's a brief summary on the description of the meeting time, if known. After council discussion, action will be needed to take, will be needed to appoint for, at a future council meeting to the boards. The second tab is the board roster. This is the list of all the boards and commission that council appoints individuals to serve on the boards. The roster list, the name, the date appointed, who it was appointed by, and the expiration date. Most of the boards were revamped when the council member-at-large position was established in two thousand eighteen. The November terms were to coincide with the elected council members after they get elected to the council. So most of the terms are for two years unless otherwise noted on the roster. The next tab you see is board requirements. Basically, this is a quick summary, a rundown, a rundown on the board's description, qualifications, and requirements for members to serve on that board. Not all board have requirements, so that's just a quick reference guide for you to review. The tab after each board committee is the committee list and name. The list includes the members that serve on the board, and there's also behind it a brief summary, a description regarding the, the board itself. Several board terms were due in November. Due to the runoff election, the boards and commissions were deferred until the new council could reappoint members. So you'll see there that there are boards that need to be reviewed with past November expiration terms. When the board terms are up, the individuals are contacted to see if they're interested and willing to serve again. The information is relayed to the inside, into the city council. And the, the individual that are contacted, they're aware that it's, that council has the ultimate decision whether they are to be reappointed or another individual is appointed. There are certain boards that have attendance requirements, and that's also listed within the book. And the city secretary's office has a record of that attendance. The board terms, as they're coming up, they're placed on the city council agenda, and it's about four weeks in advance. So council has the opportunity to be aware of when the appointment is to be made in advance. Once the appointment or reappointment is made, the mayor will have a letter by the mayor that will identify, will let them know that they're being reappointed or appointed. The oath of office is given to them, and also an outgoing letter to the outgoing members are, are sent a letter thanking them for their service. There's also a board's application that's on the website. Applications are received, behind your notebook, there is a loose attachment. And that is a list of the applications that have been received, and they're in, and the boards that they're interested in serving. I will be emailing you the actual applications, but I wanted you to be aware of people that were interested in serving. I have those applications in case you're interested in appointing those members. So this is the Boards and Commissions for your review. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions, Ms. Grimaldo?
So I did want to say, in here, looking through some of the terms that expired, for instance, eleven thirty for twenty-two, twenty twenty. So I just look at those and need to reach out to see if they either applied or want to be reappointed to that.
That is correct. Or I, I can be willing to contact them and see if they're interested in serving, if you wish. Whatever, your pleasure.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Ms. Grimaldo. I will entertain a motion. Make sure everyone's right. Recuse for executive session on personnel matters, liberating and plummy evaluation duties, discipline, complaint, or dismissal of the associated municipal court judge under the Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero seven four. And also as authorized by the Texas Code, Section five-five-one point zero seven. To consult with the attorney, the city council, may adjourn into executive session to consider pending, incorporate, complemented litigation. I will entertain a motion on the Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero seven four, and Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one point zero seven one. Who would?
The second.
Have, have... I know you have nothing else to read.
Okay, how is it looking for somebody to...
Just a fun reading.
Okay, so no action is taken in the executive session. Do I have a motion to come out of executive session and rejoin the general session?
So moved.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor? Anybody say aye? All opposed? Okay, so... I'm going to entertain a motion to make. Judge Rutter, you get the interim presiding judge with an adjustment of five percent to Kirk's salary. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Anybody say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Anything, nothing more? There is no other business before the city council in this work session. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made, and second has been made. All in favor by indicating say aye?
Aye.
All opposed by indicating saying? We are adjourned.